Okay, good morning and welcome to the August 8th, 2023 Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. We will call this meeting to order and begin with a moment of silence. I have a moment of silence for the CAL FIRE personnel who were lost. Assistant Chief Josh Bischoff, Fire Captain Tim Rodriguez, and the Pilot Tony Soza. And this is a devastating loss for CAL FIRE and for the people of California and for the families and coworkers of these men. Does anyone else have a moment of silence? Okay. Wilda, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any items not appearing on the posted agenda?
We have no items.
Then we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. It looks like there's a few items to be pulled. 5.2, 5.3, and 5.13. Anything else? Are these all for... 5.2, you want to pull Supervisor Spatier? 5.3 pulled for discussion, and 5.13 pulled by CDD for later today?
Yes.
To be edited. Okay, so all three we'll get back to. Okay. Any items from the public? Anyone wish to pull anything? I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers, and I'm not seeing any hands up in the Zoom room. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5.2, 5.3, and 5.13. Is that the only three?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We've got a couple minutes before our first timed item. Yeah, let's go to 5.13. We have CDD. Is that ready for that?
I thought they were here.
Or is that Lloyd? Are they available? Okay.
Sorry, I thought I saw Sarah submit something.
Oh, that's a big dog.
It's hot already. We'll probably just do our 906 item then.
Good morning, Board.
Oh, good morning. All right, let me read the item. 5.13, approve abandoned vehicle towing and disposal agreements between the County of Lake and A. Jones Towing for an annual amount not to exceed $30,000 for a term from July 31st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and B. Kelseyville Auto Salvage and Towing for an annual amount not to exceed $10,000 for a term from June 30th, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you. Maria Turner, Director of Community Development, but there was an inadvertent typographical error in one of those agreements, but we have cleaned it up, and Sarah did drop off, I think, a clean version that is ready for signature. The title of the agenda is correct. It is both for just one year.
Supervisor Spatier?
Just to ask real quick, it's only a change within the recitals, is that correct on the Kelseyville one?
Yes, it's only a change exactly.
And wondering if staff, if they have a... Oh, it just popped up.
Thank you.
Gotcha, so it's just deleted.
This is the one that was delivered to you, Lloyd? Is this the one this morning?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And you're good with it?
Yes, as far as deleting that recital as indicated in the screen, that is fine.
Okay. Any comments from the Board?
No.
Vice Chair Simon?
Just continual annual contract with the abandoned vehicle abatement program being operated here in the county and in partnership with both cities. Want to thank Community Development. It's never easy to continue moving forward and to try and get the amount of funds to go as far as we can. That is the challenge. We get, I think it's $1 is the main, I think it's two for a different sized vehicle, but you know, we do get some funds for it. It's not enough, but CDD and all of the agencies do a good job of, you know, just continuing, trying to move that forward to get the abandoned vehicles off the road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the public? If anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room who wishes to speak on this item?
I had a quick question.
Sure, let me just close public comment and bring it back. And yes, what's your question?
Yeah, real quick question. Under Section 4 Compensation, one contract has a term beginning July 31, 2023, the other one is June 30, 2023. So I just want to make sure we're aligning those if needed, so that the term is correct on the dates in Section 4 Compensation.
Director Turner?
I could take a look at that if you'll just give me a few minutes. I know that our goal is to continue unabated.
Those are correct. Are you speaking about a specific agreement? Because they both seem to match what they state. They're just two separate agreements with two separate dates. So the top title and the compensation dates match. They're just different dates on both those agreements.
And I see what you're saying. I'm just not sure why the date ranges are different. Somebody's getting a month longer than the other one. So I just want to make sure the intent is there and there is no break. I think probably the June 30th date would be... Well, I don't know. I don't know what the original agreement was. So if we're just extending off the original agreement, maybe the dates are correct. But I did notice they are not the same.
And it's the Third Amendment, so it is a continuation of the previous agreement. What we're both happy about is they both end June 30th, 2024, not July 31st.
Yeah.
So it's going to be great on the Fourth Amendment. Madam Chair, if there's no further comments?
We were just waiting on Director Turner
Oh.
To give her
Sorry.
Approval. She's looking through them.
Yes, I think these are continuations. These are longstanding agreements, and both of these contractors have been providing great service for us. So we'd like to just keep them going.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, ready for action?
I move to approve the Jones Towing for an annual amount not to exceed $30,000 for a term from July 31st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Would you say with amendment?
Yes.
As amended.
As amended.
That one was not amended. That was the Kelseyville.
The Jones.
Okay.
But thank you. I would have forgotten the other one, too.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, move to approve the Kelseyville Auto Salvage and Towing for an annual amount not to exceed $10,000 for a term from June 30th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and authorize the Chair to sign with amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will move to 6.1, our 906 item, Public Input. Do we have anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room who wishes to get public input? It's a reminder, you can state your name and have three minutes. And I am not seeing anyone, so we'll close public input. And our 907, I'm... 907 item is Pet of the Week, 6.2, and we have Animal Care and Control.
Good morning. I'm Officer Dunner with Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me this morning is Jake. Jake is a three-year-old Anatolian mix. He really is just the sweetest boy. He gets along with just about everybody and everything. If you want to see how he interacts with other animals, please see our TikTok. He is absolutely amazing. If he looks familiar, he was actually our June 13th Pet of the Week as well. We just feel that Jake really deserves a second opportunity to find a forever home. He's a really amazing dog, and I think he would do well in any home. If anybody has any questions about Jake, wants to come and visit him, we're located at 4949 Hellbush Drive, or for any questions over the phone, 707-263-0278. Thank you.
Thanks for coming back, Jake. Good luck.
He's a good boy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, 6.3, 9:10 a.m., Consideration of Lake County Tourism Improvement District, 2022 Annual Marketing Report. And we have Brian Fisher. If you want to come on up and join us.
I would love to.
You can sit up here if you'd like.
You know, this is easier for me to look
Sure.
This direction. Is that working out okay? I'm going to just do this. Don't have to worry. Thank you very much, Board of Supervisors and county staff. I'm going to keep this as quick as I can for everybody. I know time is important here, so let's dive right into our 2022, 2022 Annual Report. I guess I don't have anything to click it with. No, okay, there we go. Thank you, Sam. Our Agenda Day for this report, we're going to look at Board members really quick, a few changes, very few changes. The economic impact of tourism in Lake County, very important to keep in mind. We're going to look at our marketing program overview for '22, how did we do? And we're going to look at, touch at the very end on our district renewal. Right off the bat, Board has not changed a great deal since last year's report. There's one new addition in there, and I think actually Susan is a new addition in there. It was Jessica in our last report. But we've got Alfredo over at the Robinson Rancheria, who is now sitting on our Board and has been a great Board member. But all of these Board members, as well as Wildashock out here in the chamber, do a lot of work. They show up a lot. I think we've only one time not, maybe twice, not had a quorum. We've done pretty well. It's a pretty active group. So I want to thank the Board, and we'll go to the next slide. So how do we measure our marketing success? We look at website traffic. That's kind of the Holy Grail for destination marketing organizations. Who's at our website? Where are they going? What are they spending time with? What are they doing when they're on our website? We're going to look at our social media growth and engagement, even more important. How are people reacting to what we're putting out there? Campaign impressions and performance, that's the media that we're paying for. We're going to also look at our email database growth, big category of driving traffic to our website and engendering interest in the county. Our partnerships that we have throughout the county and throughout the region, as well as public relations. Next slide. So right off the bat, let's look at '22 in terms of revenue for the district or for the assessment. We were down from '21 about 24%. So a pretty big chunk, almost $100,000 out of our budget in '22 versus '21. We rode a pretty good pandemic time in 2021, folks. We're seeing that people can now get in their cars, go further. They can actually get on planes and they can go other places. So we're seeing that decrease. And the next slide will show you kind of where the real big decreases came. It came out of the county almost $100,000 less in '22 than '21. The County TOT was slightly different because they were paid out differently in '21 versus '22. Clear Lake was down by about $3,000 or $4,000. Lakeport only down by about $2,000. And up were Twin Pine Casino and Robinson Rancheria, our two contracts. So some good news there and good partnerships that we've created with our two contract partners. And our next slide will show you the economic impact. This is data from Visit California from Pete Runyon and Associates. So just the real crux of this is for everybody who we get into our county to stay in one of our hotel rooms or one of our short-term rentals, they're going to spend a dollar in that hotel room, and they're going to spend another $3 outside of it. Economic impact of a visitor is huge. $175 million, according to this research, in Lake County in 2021 and 2022, $13 million in taxes, both state and local taxes, and almost 1,800 people are employed tangentially to the hospitality industry in Lake County. So it's a very important industry for us, one that we obviously want to keep growing and keep moving. Then the next slide, our website traffic, again, back to that. That's kind of the Holy Grail. This is lakecounty.com. Page views were up. Even in a year where we had less budget, we're up about 464,000. So organically, our website is doing extremely well. It's a very big category of people coming directly to our website, searching us out. Top performing pages are kind of interesting. I just like it because it's cabins, homepages, our events, outdoor recreation, and then lo and behold, Harbin Hot Springs. So Harbin Hot Springs does pretty well for the county and does well for our website. New Users was up 12% and Sessions were up 12% or 9%. And the next slide, organic social media. We have quite a goldmine in Karen Pavoni, who runs our social media. She's very good at not only shooting and covering the county, but she's also good about writing about the county. Our Facebook increased in '22 to up 3% and a whopping 32% for Instagram followers. They're all coming out of the right markets for us, Los Angeles, Sacramento, Santa Rosa, San Jose, San Francisco, and Stockton. So great, really good traffic and extremely good numbers coming out of our organic social media. And then the next slide would be paid search. It was down across the board. Search is just that. Paid search is exactly that. You get what you pay for. We didn't have the budgets that we had in '22, so we were down about 12% in impressions, 16% in clicks, and 15% in click-throughs. So the more we have to spend in paid search, the more we get people to our website. Programmatic display banners, this is unfortunately not going to play for you right now, but this will actually be on our website if you'd like to go see the banners that are running programmatically. We did about 1.8 million impressions from our programmatic display banners. And then our connected TV, over-the-top TV, we don't do linear television. We do basically YouTube and Pre-roll, 2.2 million impressions there. These are really nice ads. These are really engaging. This is kind of where we get our brand across. This is where we get to show ourselves. And again, you'll be able to see it on our website. We ventured for the first time in '22 into something very new, a new category called influencer marketing. It's a crazy category to try to figure out, but we wanted to make a, we wanted to take a stab at it. The agency, medium giant, helped a lot on this. We had to identify influencers that were really reaching our region, because some influencers may live near you, but their audiences are often New York or down in Florida. You never know. So we really looked at who could help us the most. The company that we, the couple that we came up with was Don't Forget to Move. And something that the agency negotiated, which was extremely important for us, was we got to own all of the assets that they shot while they were here. So we've used that 15 minutes worth of video. We've cut those into commercials that will run outside the county. We use all their images. We use all that stuff. That was a real big advantage, because a lot of the influencers don't give you that, those assets. They take them with them. We had six posts, two blog posts, and two vlog posts, and we really kept the budget really minimal, but we got them all around the county, and we feel really good about our first influencer marketing venture. The next slide, our paid social. So we pay for people to see our banners outside of the county or to see our social media. 80% increase in impressions, 90% increase in clicks, and almost really a great click-through rate. Industry is about 90%, so an excellent click-through rate for our social media that runs outside the county. Very happy with that. Next slide. We also did some updated audience intelligence. We wanted to see where are people coming from? Santa Rosa is a real emerging market for us. We see more and more numbers on Santa Rosa into Lake County. And we also, down at the bottom, you'll see Yuba City. So we actually increased some of our spend in social, our paid social and our paid search in those two markets. So we're kind of keeping a watch on it versus big San Francisco and big Sacramento Valley, which we know are our big markets. Next slide. Our newsletter has continued to grow, over 7,300 contacts. Our open rate is way above industry average. Put a lot of work into these. We really try to engage people. I don't know if you saw the email that just went out this week. We've got a Perfect Day in Clear Lake, really great piece. We've also got, we're redoing our loops, the kayak loops. As you know, or maybe you don't know, the website is dead for the kayak loops. And so we're trying to resurrect them in the form of blogs and keep them on our website. Good industry, you know, great, above-average click-through. And anyway, we like our newsletter. It draws a lot of traffic to our website after that news, that email drops, and they spend a lot of time with it. The Lake County Visitor Map, another fully paid map, 65,000 maps outside of county. Very happy with how that has gone. We just redid the map, and we just did a new distribution on it for this year, but that was in 2022. It's fully ad-supported, so yay for fully ad-supported. Another partnership is our friends at, excuse me, our friends at North of Ordinary through Visit California. It is Del Norte County, Humboldt, and Mendocino County. Great website traffic. It's in the top 10 in terms of delivering traffic to our website. So we have a great partnership there. Those guys are really great to call on. They help out. And, you know, they're, it's an excellent group. We've really, we've kind of really hit the ground running as a team and excellent, excellent resources for us to have here in Lake County. It's those folks. Our next partnership, well, that partnership actually drove us down to the Travel and Adventure Show, which was in 2022 in May, and we were able to distribute about six, about over 1,000 of our maps. We got, increased our email database by about 600. And we would never have been able to afford to go to the show on our own, folks. These shows are really expensive. All those other counties more than doubled the spend in order for us to get there. Really, again, great partnership with our North of Ordinary folks. The next one is, we continue to fund the wonderful Michelle Carson CTA of the Year. That was this year, not '22. The CTA program. So we fund $5,000 to the Chamber with the CTA program. I really rely on CTAs. I go to them for help, dosed in tours, you name it. The CTAs are great, and it's a great program for Lake County. People are really proud of the county and really learn stuff that they never have, would have known about the county after they take the program. Our Book Direct widget, okay, what is the stupid widget? Well, a widget is something that we bolt onto our website that allows people to search for listings directly. And it also allows us, on our advertising, to drive people directly to listings. So it really gets us closer to our customer, which is our stakeholder. We want to really drive that traffic to people looking for places to stay. And we started that last year mid-May, only had about 5,700 searches by the end of the year, but that number is completely taken off this year. A really great widget. We like what we're doing there. Next is our Visit California. We sent Trudy Wakefield to a great media event down in the Presidio, San Francisco. About 50 reporters were there. They're all looking for story ideas. We had great little gift giveaways that we created for the county, and out of it came a really beautiful article in Seven by Seven Magazine. So we're happy with that, you know, cause and effect. It's nice to see it happening. And then our trade shows, Visit California. The three of us attended Visit California's trade show at the Hilton in February of '22. Really important for Lake County to show up at these events, really important for us to have a seat at that table. And they're great events. We learn a lot, and we get seen, and we get heard, and we send that message to Visit California that we are in the tourism business here in Lake County. And last but not least, our fantastic renewal, which was a bear. But it is over. We've renewed the district. It will start on January 1st. As all of you know, it's a 10-year district. We got a 75% increase in that assessment. Since then, we've had, we'll probably have three new lodging openings. We've got Hotopia. We'll have getaway opening, and we've got Canucki Harbor, you know, up and running. So we really expect and hope to see this number continue to grow, to really fund this district. We really struggled at 1.5% there in that last year, as you can see, and it's just, we're looking forward to having this new district in place, and off we go. And with that, I would like to say thank you to you all. I know I blew through that, but I would love to answer any questions, which I know there will be.
Well, thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
You and the Board do incredible work. I just love, like, reminiscing and thinking back over the last few years and how much progress that we've made, and that's been with your leadership. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do we have questions from the Board? Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Very impressive, always. I saw one redirect in there. So I saw FineLakeCounty.com. So are you finding, like, playing with some of the long-tail search terms or something like that? I'm just curious how that redirect popped up in your marketing.
Yeah, that's the only URL that we own. I mean, it's really hard to find redirects or to find URLs with Lake in it anymore. They're pretty much gone. So we did get, and we do have FineLakeCounty.com, and that goes on like our billboards. All of our brand stuff is Fine Lake County, so that we can kind of have some sort of a sense of gauging how that brand is actually drawing people possibly to the website. So that's what we use that for.
Yeah, cool. Second question, just, obviously, your metrics are great. Obviously, you're all tourism-focused, but because of that success, I'm immediately thinking of our poor little redesigned government website. And so I guarantee nobody's looking for government resources, but if you got them anyway, could there be one little footer link or something like that? So if people are looking to connect with government resources, maybe there'd be a way to do that. Just one little weensy link would be one thought. But other than that, very impressive. You have a lot of things going on in this marketing campaign. I'm very impressed by it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Anyone else? Supervisor Spatier?
Just a quick question. It looks like, just a comment first off. It looks like we resolved the Lakeport issue where the number didn't seem to match what the number should be. I saw it went up to like 10% out of the full amount that you receive from all jurisdictions that take part in that. So that sounded good, looked good. I hope it's completely resolved. But I did notice that in the year-to-year comparison assessments from '21 to '22, it went down in '22. Do you have any specific reasons as to why that might be? I know you guys put a lot of effort in your 10-year and did not necessarily spend the same amount of capital on marketing during that time, so just kind of curious what might come to mind.
Yeah, the renewal was actually not budgeted for in '22. We did not realize that we had to renew our district, and we didn't, we had no idea that it would cost us $51,000. So we really quickly had to kind of draw down everything and be able to pay to get the district renewed. There was no other way to do it as well. I mean, I kept looking at, how else can we do this? Can we just ask our stakeholders if they want to renew? Well, it doesn't work that way. So, and the good news of that is I believe the first time the creation of the district was a little over $140,000. So we kind of got it at a bargain that we got the renewal. So I don't know if that answers your question, but we definitely had to scramble with resources there. The other thing is, I mean, if you can see that number for the County TOT was almost $100,000 less, and part of that is because we're, we run our business on a cash basis. We received in 2021 money from 2020 that was, that was from September of 2020, and we didn't receive it until February. So those payments were really late. And so it kind of, it kind of put money into '21 that was really 2020 money, but we, you know, we never know where it was going to come from. It was just kind of waiting and seeing. I think it's gotten a bit better. I mean, it has gotten better. You know, we would, we would like, I mean, I don't want to take you there, but we think there's some ways that we can make it get better. And it's hard to run a marketing organization when you don't really know what your numbers are going to be. You have to make these commitments upfront to media vendors and to our agency. You really, we really struggle to do that now.
But you're working with Patrick, our tax collector, to
Yeah.
Work out those issues.
And we are. And Patrick is totally receptive. We're getting things going. What we're seeing, I mean, just kind of anecdotally, we're seeing like, Clear Lake collects TOT monthly and remits monthly. That's probably a better setup really for everybody. I know it's a lot more work probably, but like as somebody who pays into TOT, all of my bills are monthly. I don't really have quarterly bills. So it just, it's just not a normal metronome for business is this quarterly payment. It's okay if you're, you know, maybe you're behind on something or you're paying your taxes. It's okay if you're, you know, maybe you're behind on something or you're paying your taxes. But we pay things monthly, everything, electric, insurance, everything. It would be much easier if, I think, the county collected TOT monthly. It just, your, your numbers would be cleaner and they would be closer. I think we'd have a lot less fining because people wouldn't forget. Because I even forget, Lynn Butcher forgets, we always forget. It's like, oh God, this thing's due. So anyway, I think that would work. And we definitely see out of Clear Lake, it's super consistent, really consistent. And we know we're going to get a check from Clear Lake for about $6,600 every month. That helps a lot for our budgeting. Whereas we kind of don't know on the other two very much at all. We're, we're getting better, but long answer.
Did you have something else?
No.
And I'm just continuing to work with Patrick.
Patrick's great, yeah. We've got somebody that we can, all good.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Vice Chair Simon?
Appreciate you coming, all the work that's done. You know, obviously now we got the 10-year, so we can look at that long-term strategy as we're moving forward. Did have a couple of questions. When, when North of Ordinary, when you guys attended that, I see that there was a stay-and-play package, some other stuff that was raffled off at the booth.
Yep.
You know, as partners, I think, reaching out to partners to make sure we have as much of that as possible for getting guests here in the community. I know a lot of folks would have those same packages, we can just inundate them with it. Also had another question with the TID, and just thinking of the marketing opportunity. Would this be a story for PEG, I guess is a question? Would that be something, I know it's educational, would be educating outside community and other folks in the community for a PEG district for, I don't know, just
There's always the possibility.
A short little program or something that we have going on. A lot of folks watch it here locally. I just think it'd be interesting to have. I saw a unique program that Channel 9 does, obviously a bigger audience, you know, for public TV, where they raffle off a lot of Northern California vacation spots and other stuff, more local stuff. Maybe a partnership with KQED or something like that also.
Sure.
Might be an opportunity for. So just kind of putting some ideas out there as we keep moving forward with these things, telling our story.
Yep.
We'll say it all the time. Also, I see that Visit California has reached out to some of the tribal nations, I know ourselves. There's a big push right now throughout, you know, the United States and a lot of the, or the cultural tourism. I think there's a couple of articles that came out in Visit California regarding to our tribal nations here in Lake County. So just continuing on that push too, I know there's a big push for that right now, which may be an opportunity for all of us to work together with the unique cultural history that Lake County has. And then, and now where we're at in the different business world, so.
Yeah.
Just want to mention all those things. We're open to those conversations. I know Larry Glupay from our community is on there and want to continue those conversations as we're moving forward.
Yeah, that's the Native California campaign, and Visit California's put a lot of money behind it. I know Urocs up in Del Norte have done a lot, as well as the Agua Caliente folks, tribe down in Palm Springs. And we've, I've seen both of them speak at events and it's very insightful, what they're doing to basically rekind of define what tourism means to them. And, and it's, it's really cool. I mean, the coolest, I mean, for sure is what I see up in Del Norte, the Urocs, they are like rocking it up there. Steve Jim Bacon, Jim Bacon, CEO up there of their tribe is, they're just, they've, they're running it like, they're running it like a business, like an MBA. It's crazy, it's really cool. Good stuff, neat.
That's all I have.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, Brian, appreciate, I really appreciate seeing these numbers increase the way they have. I know you've been putting in a lot of work. It's just, it's great to see. I know that, you know, like you mentioned with the TID and TOT, with the collection of it kind of, you know, puts that into perspective where you can't to get a real good grasp on what you're looking at. But at the same time, with what you have, I mean, I've just been following and just all of the people you reach, all of the pictures are awesome. Like the Blue Lakes pictures and the, and the, I don't know if that's on Mount Conackdie, but I just, I think those are the things that people like seeing. I mean, I know that when we go to different events for RCRC, they have pictures of each of the counties and everybody's just like, wow, that's beautiful, where is it at? So, great job.
Thank you.
So we're going to need some of those pictures for the conference in September?
We are.
We're going to need some.
I know, I just got another ask from, I forget who, anyway. We're, we're, we're really generous, I mean, we really, I mean, if it, you're going to promote the county, we're all in. We just, that's, it's all, and, and most people are. I, I go to the, the Photogood, Photographer Lake County Photogood on, on, it's a group on Instagram. And I ask those folks and Karen does too, people really are good about sharing up here. And we, we need that because we just, we don't have a lot of budgets for sending people out on shoots. It's pricey.
I don't know if it's, I mean, it might be a little out there, but Groupon, do you guys work with them? I heard you say something like that, I don't know if you did, group, Groupon?
No, not Groupon, not at all.
Oh, okay.
But it's, it's, it's a, anyway, there's the Lake County Photogood. And there's a lot of semi-professionals that put their photo, photography out there. Mostly it's Lake County, a lot of, a lot of scenic stuff. But we use, we use a lot of, a lot of stuff that people share with us. And our asset bank is good, it looks good, happy with it.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers who'd like to speak on this item? Or anyone in Zoom, let me check, I'm not seeing any hands up. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, is it possible to take up item 5.2?
Yes, yes, I was just going to say that. Okay, so we will go to the pulled item 5.2. Approve agreement between the County of Lake and Visit Lake County, California for provision of administrative services to Lake County Tourism Improvement District in the amount of $112,500 from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, and authorize the chair to sign. And who pulled it?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Unless there's other reasons. Thank you very much. So first and foremost, before I make any requests for changes on there, I want to say how much I do appreciate the TID. None of what I'm about to state is that you're not doing a good job, it's, I want to push you guys and challenge you guys. Number one, I hope that we can work in the next following year on a multi-year contract. I think you guys need some predictability in what you're going to do. And it can help you maybe even get a reduced rate on whatever contracts you're getting. If you can do multi-year contracts, not just a one-year at a time, hoping and wondering if we're going to get the same type of support from all the different jurisdictions. So hopefully in the next iteration, that's going to be, that can be a topic of conversation. I don't want to change that this year, that's too big of a change to do right here, right now. Second one is, and it was interesting that I was going to bring this up today because I was listening to the news on the radio on the way here to work. And they were talking about the new dates of when the, the population shifts that are occurring with, by, I think now it's 2035 or something like that. Less than 50% of America will be white. They also said that the average age of white America is something like 49 or something like that. And those of color, it's average age of 37. We are offering an adventure here. And we are surrounded by communities that are very diverse. And I'm not seeing the diversity in our imagery that we are putting out there. And I want to challenge you to get greater diversity within the pictures that we are putting on the billboards, that we're putting on the website. However it is that we are sharing and marketing. I know that you are sharing the diversity of activities here. But I want to make sure that everyone, no matter if it's from Sacramento, San Francisco, Yuba City, wherever they're coming from, that they can imagine themselves here, enjoying their time in Lake County. And I think that imagery is very helpful to make it attractive for everybody. And so I've been looking through your stuff, we talked about it last time. And here is an opportunity to put it in writing. And so I would like to offer, to add to the agreement, which would be 1.9, I believe. Let me make sure I'm looking at the right thing here. So on page three, under section Contractor Responsibilities, it stops at 1.8. And so 1.9, and I just worded it, it could be changed. Lake County TID shall place an emphasis on marketing the county as a whole equitably around the lake. That was another one of the conversations we had, to ensure that there is advertisement for the North Shore. Make sure there is equal advertisement for Clear Lake, Middletown. It seemed to me very heavy on the Kelseyville and Lakeport area. So that's one of them. And then the other one, which I started to breach the topic earlier, 1.10. Lake County TID shall promote Lake County using our population's diversity and its imagery. I just think it's important, I think it's something that we should all strive for. And I want to challenge you and, and push you to make it happen so that we can make sure that everybody wants to come to Lake County and feels welcoming and comfortable in coming here. And so looking to see if the board is in agreeance or not to those additions. Other than that, the amount and the rest of the agreement is fine by me, I want to keep supporting the TID and what they do.
So the, the contract is annual though, because it's based on the financials. There we go. Stephen Carter?
Good morning, Board. So the reason why this agreement is annual is because it's based on what is projected as 1/9 of the TOT that is going to be received for the county. And doing a three-year estimate is possible, but it would not be very accurate. And the reason why 1/9, that's actually what was in policy for marketing before the TID existed. So it is possible, but it would not be very accurate.
Supervisor Spatia?
Just as a response to that, as a business, if you tell me you're going to give me $112,000 per year, it gives me an idea of what I can spend. We amend contracts all the time, but at least they'll know that there's a three-year contract that is going to happen rather than a year-to-year. So again, not negotiating the years today, appreciate the extra information on that. But I don't think 1/9, in my opinion, is not something that I, I would be worried about on a multi-year contract to provide extra assistance for them to be able to market better and use their money more efficiently to do the marketing.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any more comments from the board, unless you have something?
No, I'll just respond with the addition of number nine. Obviously, a, a bigger conversation needs to happen on the multi-year contracts, which I completely agree. We need to have it and, and figure it out as we're moving forward, especially since we just had the 10-year renewal. So we need to look at that from a decade standpoint as we're moving forward. You know, so definitely would like to see that conversation come back before next year. And then obviously, I think adding it when we're, when we're talking about the diversity and the, you know, everything that hears in Lake County, I completely agree with seeing yourself somewhere obviously makes that a little bit better. So I'm in agreement with the addition of number nine. But I would like to hear from the TID too on that conversation.
And if I can clarify, number nine was to market the county equitably around the whole lake? And 10 was the diversity?
Oh, yeah, too, okay, I apologize, so nine and 10.
So in terms of our, our diversity in our advertising is something we've, we've definitely tried to work hard at. We don't have budgets for models, so we can't be very specific. We've put out calls on social media. And unfortunately, when we were doing this, it was kind of at the middle of COVID. So we had to do all sorts of other things involved to get people in a group who didn't really know each other. So we're going to, we're going to continue. I mean, we know that we want to show and represent the diversity that, that comes to Lake County. The hard part is finding it in Lake County sometimes, when you're really trying to find models from Lake County. And we did, we did, you know, we, we have natives in our ads, we've had Latinos and Latinas in our ads. We've had same-sex couples in our ads. We've tried to be as diverse as we can pulling from our population. But it is, it is, we found it difficult to get to that next place that we, we know we'd like to be. So we'll, we'll keep working at it. I mean, we, we definitely, the influencers, we had to take the way that came. They were, you know, they were great influencers, but they were, there wasn't any diversity there. But we really felt like that was the right group because of the assets that we would get. And then we used all of those assets in our advertising because they were free, essentially we'd paid for them. So we're trying to do things pretty, pretty much on a budget, obviously, and we'll continue to do that. I, I would, I mean, I, I always scout out people and think, can I go up and tap them on the shoulders and say, do you live here? Would you show up to a shoot? It's like, because it's hard to find them in county. We could pay models, but it's hard to find them in county. And it's interesting, that's kind of, did anybody, no, I'm not going to go there.
And if I could respond to that, I would say use us as well if you're looking for people to, and be a part of your future shoots. We, we have a wide circle.
And I think it'll be easier without COVID, that was really complicated. We had people who showed up who would have been great in the shoot, but they hadn't, they hadn't, they couldn't verify that they were, they had been vaccinated. And so we had to say no to those people that day. And so, you know, it was just really complicated because you've got this whole weird thing going on that sat right in the middle of the shoot. But now we don't have all those issues, we can pull people together and not be weird about it. So in terms of covering the lake, we struggle, we, I do, I, I reach out always to, we look and dig and try to find things. I mean, our newsletter is probably the best example of how we really tried to get coverage around the lake. I mean, we assign these stories based on not really interest, but really what have we not covered and what can we cover? It's, it's, it's hard, it is hard. And, but we, we're working at it and we're going to continue to work at it. We want to represent all of Lake County. It is sometimes a tough quilt to sew together, but we try, we really do. That is, you know, and, and when you have so much happening between Lakeport and Kelseyville, it's, it's, it's easy to just use that because that's what, you know, that's what draws people and that's what's, that's our sizzle. So worked really well with the Catfish Derby this year, and they were really helpful in giving us information. So much of it is, is getting people to respond and to reach out to us. Because we don't always know what's going on in all of these pockets in our county. And when they do, we're like on it, we're way on it, we're like featured in all of our social, we put it everywhere. But we need to know. So when I speak to people, they always say, what can you do, what can we do to help? And it's like, let us know what you're doing. Or organize and put together a website that we can go to and we can understand what's happening. And I can look, I go to the chamber's website to find events all the time because people know to go to the chamber, they don't know to go to us as much. So I do pull stuff off of there. But we try very much to tell this 360 story of the county. But it, it sometimes doesn't show.
Supervisor Crandall?
No, I think what might help too is with the, with both of the tribal hotels. The, the GMs or whoever's on the board have marketing departments. And they schedule each year, they have the, the big times. And in those big times, they offer booths where people come from all sorts of walks of life in the county, from the county. And so that might be a, a nice way to start, just talk with like Alfredo or, or is it Larry, Jeff now?
Yeah.
And so talk with them about their big times, that might be a place where you can work with, with them to get some good, you know, material or whatever the case may be. Because I do know that a lot of times when the marketing departments are advertising, they, they work with their employees, they have them, which is very diverse as well. I know at Robinson, they're pretty diverse. So that, that may be a good, a good place to start and maybe talk to them about even having some of the, the folks that are part of the employee list do it. And I know they're always often, often very accessible. I know that, and I know Habemotol, Running Creek isn't, isn't necessarily a part of this. But I know in their advertising, there's always people that are either from the tribe or that work there. So I, and I don't know how that works with, you know, models and whatnot. But I know that, that's a, you know, a way to outside-the-box type of working.
Yeah, I mean, it's just finding, it's finding the resource, it's finding them is really what we will do. We've got our model release forms, it's not complicated what we do. And it's generally, you know, it's a pretty good day, give them lunch, some fun. But, you know, we, we've struggled, well, we talked about doing a lake shoot this year because of the lake's level is beautiful. We just didn't have the resources to do it. Shoots basically cost about $5,000 just right out, just for almost nothing. And that just base, that gets everybody there, that is pretty much what it takes. That is pretty much what it takes. And that's, I mean, if you've got a videographer there, if you've got somebody doing drone stuff, you're talking 20, 25, $30,000. And we've looked at, you know, there's great resources around us, and there's a new guy that just moved to the county. I mean, I'm always, you know, hearing from these folks, but the numbers behind it are just not numbers that we can, we can do yet. We just have to kind of work with the budgets that we've got because if we spend all the money shooting it, then we're not going to have any money to put it on, to advertise it. I mean, it just, that, it just boils down to, we want to keep as much of our resources to do our outside marketing as we can. So that's why when we found the influencers, we were like, hey, this is a really good deal. We get 15 minutes of assets.
Right.
High resolution, drone, everything. It's like, all right, I'm in. But they were.
You might be able to get, you probably won't have to use as many resources when it comes to the, you know, the two different tribes because, you know, their employees work there and they just sign a release. You know what I'm saying? It's on duty, and that's kind of one of those things that they do anyhow when they market. So I don't know, you could work that out with them. I'm not sure of the details, but I know they do it all the time. So that might be a way to not have to spend all the resources if so. I mean, that's just something you have to work out with the GMs.
Yep.
So I appreciate that. We've had this conversation multiple years now, and I agree with the sentiment, but I'm concerned about making it a contract obligation and how is it enforced and what are the ramifications? And so I am hesitant to move forward on that today, just doing that on the fly because I want to make sure that it's well thought out and articulated. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, I share that particular sentiment as well. But also, if we're talking about future contract items, I just wanted to circle back on a couple things. But the website is fine, is a landing site, obviously, for Visit Lake County, but the TID itself, so there's, again, there's another domain in the privacy policy, discoveryourlake.com that appears to also have some of your governance documents and stuff like that. So on the main website, it'd be nice to have some governance documents and about page or something like that. It's not going to be a highlight of this landing page, but clearly we want to identify what the TID is, and if there's any branding confusion about our various earls, let's resolve that. So I was curious about the governance documents and how discoveryourlake.com fits into that and if we can start merging that in a future iteration. On the main website, that raised questions of cookie policies, you need one, privacy policy needs an update to ensure compliance with the California Online Privacy Protection Act, as many websites in our county do. I'm not picking on you guys, but COPA is a thing, and it's been for many years, so we need to figure that stuff out. One reason I would hesitate on addressing diversity right now is like, yeah, how do you enforce that in a contract provision? More importantly, we discussed before previous meetings, the use of remarketing technologies in Facebook and stuff like that. So the more we attempt to inject a diversity metric into this, that would probably, we would be asking you guys to actually do, you know, keyword search terms in your advertising to market to certain groups and stuff like that. Maybe a direction we need to go. Certainly, the technology is there, but the more we talk about that, the more I want to talk about remarketing and.
Okay, let's keep it to the contract.
Yeah, so plenty of things we could throw in a future contract, including just the nuts and bolts of transparency and governance, but on that one, one subject, I think, kind of have to think about that.
So I really appreciate the sentiment about the diversity. I promise you, that's something we're going to continue to try to do, work at it. We just need, you know, we need to, we're very conscious about the money that we spend doing this stuff. We have to be. We have a $330,000 budget to market the county. Mendocino next door has 1.8. So we just don't, we just have to do things a little bit more. Let's see. I don't know. But I promise that, I mean, that it's the form, it's at the forefront of our mind when we do this. I've got to do a shoot at my own property. I'm struggling there, too. Like, how do I do this? I want people and I want diversity, but hard sometimes to pull it out of the, pull it out of the county.
Okay, I'm going to open this up for public comment. If we have anyone in the chambers that wishes to speak on this. And not seeing anyone. I do have a hand up in the Zoom room. Ginger Kite, you can unmute, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to input because I am a volunteer administrator for Facebook and Instagram for a number of groups, the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce, Visit Lower Lake, Lower Lake Community Action Group, and the Lower Lake Schoolhouse Museum. I do everything as a volunteer. I do not pay for anything. I create content and I share content. I'm thinking I'm going to reach out to you, to the, to visit Lake County, then share some of the things that I do and share some of the information that I have. I'm happy to do that. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ginger. And Brian, would you be willing to give your contact information or a place for her to reach out to you?
Absolutely. I mean, it's the alias URL that I work with, which is info@discoveryourlake.com. Karen Pavoni is also, and I will connect you, Ginger, with Karen. Karen is who we really want to connect you with. She's one running our social channels, and we would love information coming from you. Please.
I, can I, can I speak again?
Sure.
Okay. Karen, Karen Pavoni, I follow, she's a friend of mine on Facebook. I follow her on Facebook. I share her information. One of the things that I do with, you mentioned Lake County Photographers Guild, one of the things I do every Sunday, it's called Photography Sunday on the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce page, and that's what I do. I share photos. I'm very familiar with Karen. I would be delighted to work with her.
Okay. Just as a reminder, we're talking about the contract now, so let's stay on our topic. Thank you so much, Ginger, for your input. And do we have any other public comments? I'm not seeing anyone else in the boardroom or in Zoom, so we'll bring it back to the board. And Supervisor Spatier.
So I would like to see this being added to the contract. I know that there's some skepticism as far as what we're adding. I just want to read 1.1. Contractor shall cooperate with county and county staff in the performance of all work hereunder. What's our measurement of that? It's just to put in writing what we hope the relationship brings to us, and I'm hopeful because it's the second time that I've brought it up, and I don't want to bring it up again without. I feel if we do a contract, there should be expectations. Part of my expectations is for us to challenge the TID to meet these, these things that we've been talking about. And if we don't put it in writing, I feel it's not going to happen in the same way than if we put it in writing. It will push and challenge them to make that happen. I don't want to punish them if it doesn't happen in the way that I want it to happen, but it's a challenge. And if it's in writing, then it's set. And I see no issues with adding the terms in the contractor responsibilities.
Yeah. And the reason I disagree with doing it in the moment and not taking some time to sit down with county council and with the TID and work it out in a way that, you know, is really forward-thinking and works for all of us, so I disagree with doing it today. But I'm, we can bring it back and have another discussion after staff has had time to work on it. I don't know if anyone else has.
Yes, she's.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hesitate to encourage the board to make any amendments today, and for the very reason that the Tourism Improvement District Board will have to reconvene and review any amendments made to this contract. And we just met last week, and we don't meet again until October. Is that correct?
11th.
11th. I guess we could try to schedule a special meeting, but again, that, I don't want to delay the revenue given our budgetary levels at this point in time. I do recommend that we meet after this meeting to develop the contract for next year to include all those items discussed today, including the length of time, diversity and expectations, so that both the TID board can have time to review it and this board, too.
Supervisor Crandall.
I think they could absolutely have a special meeting. I brought this up in subtle ways when they laid out the first initial presentation about the areas on the North Shore, the different tribes, the different ethnicities. There, I just mentioned some possible ways to work with the different tribes and their hotels and their marketing departments. There's also a Juneteenth event that usually happens in Middletown where some folks can go over and talk with some folks that possibly would want to do something like that. So I think, I think it's fine to me, but I think there's a possibility that things can happen, so, unless there's something legal that we can't, we have to look at, but otherwise, I'm fine with it.
So if it comes back to us after, whether it's a special meeting or the next month's meeting with an amendment, I'm okay to move forward, but I haven't seen a change. And I get it that in the past year, there hasn't been, but it's not, again, the first time it's been discussed or brought up. And I hesitate to understand the repercussion of us kicking this type of philosophy and way of thinking down the road for the next year's contract. I think we need to do what's appropriate and correct. I'm willing to help out with the finances, to say today, we approve what we have in front of us with a promise that the amendments, as suggested, will be brought back to their board and brought back to us as an amendment as soon as possible, not next year. I just think it's important that we get this right and that we challenge. Again, I know it's difficult, but I want to push for the challenge. I also want to be available to help out with that challenge because, again, we know a lot of people and we can connect you with people who do want to be involved in photo shoots and being the face of Lake County as they get advertised all around the place. So I don't think it's an impossibility to ask for something to come back, but waiting till next year would be disappointing for me.
So is the next meeting in October?
Yeah, October 11th.
Okay, so we request a special meeting in September for just this item?
I mean, we can do special meetings, it's just.
Right. Yeah, I just know.
And I'm okay for October. I'm not, I don't have a timeline of when this needs to come back. I just don't want to wait till next year.
The reason I'm suggesting a special meeting is because the meetings are long because they're not every month, and so I want to, you don't want to make your next regularly scheduled meeting extra long for extra discussion because this is going to be a lot of discussion that's going to happen. So I'm just trying to be considerate of your normal meeting and also the urgency to bring this back. So what's your preference, I guess?
I, so, I mean, to Susan's point, I mean, our bank account is getting pretty low.
Yeah. Well, if we approve today.
We're on vapor.
And we request that, and we give a deadline of when we want to see an amendment to this, today's approved contract to incorporate this language. If you, if we wait until the October meeting, we may not see until December or November. So I just.
Yeah, I don't really envision you guys any shoots between now and then, to be honest with you. We just don't have those resources right now. Even when we do receive this money, we're not going to go out and do a photo shoot of, with, that's not going to represent the diversity that you're looking for. I think we really, you know, this, these conversations get difficult because what is your idea of diversity versus my idea of diversity? I think we're going to have to get really specific then. And I'm okay with that, but somebody's going to need to put it out there. What is your, what is that? Because like I said, we've used natives in our ads, we've had Latinos.
So, but do you want a special meeting or do you want a regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, so October?
October 11th.
Okay, so I'll be there, staff will be there, if you want to invite.
Well, and when I speak of the tribes per se, I'm talking about the employees that work there and the people that work there. There's diverse cultures. I'm not just referring to tribes. I know a lot of times it gets construed that way because I used to be the tribal chair and I'm from Robinson, but I'm not. I'm talking about a wide array of different ethnicities that not only work there but are in the district. That's why I mentioned also Juneteenth in Middletown. So I'm just trying to look at every single ethnicity as well. So that, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. So thanks.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, totally support moving this ahead with a firm commitment that we'll bring this back, probably starting with them, and they can bring it back to the board to address not just diversity and all that, but there are some housekeeping items that I mentioned on the website and just some cleanup. So just to clarify the scope of services and bring back recommended amendments, including diversity, but possibly also including some cleanup items.
And I think we need to find consensus for that, though. Vice President Simon?
Yeah, willing to move forward, obviously, with it just committing before the end of the year that comes back. I don't want to put a specific date. Things happen, so definitely having that. So this discussion is put to bed before we do the long-term contract discussion that'll be coming later. So obviously, in support of moving it forward there, I think that's a good compromise, Vice Supervisor Spatier, is we're moving this forward to let you know the support is here as we're having this conversation. And just, you know, on the equity, you have a pretty diverse board. Maybe that's just a simple change of if you're a board member, you may be thrown into a shoot and we're doing it out here. And, you know, I think it's a good idea. You know, we do contracts and other things with different partners here in the county, and diversity isn't as good as it is on your current board that you have here. So obviously, you don't hit every mark, but I think we're moving in the right direction. So I think it's just that conversation, but yeah, that might be a, hey, you're going to be on the board. We might need you in this photo shoot over at the winery or the hotel or casino, whatever we're doing. So I think that's a way.
The TID board.
Maybe.
TID board is incredibly diverse.
Yeah, that's what I mean. There's your actors right there. There's your photo folks right there.
Other duties as a side.
Yeah, other duties as a stakeholder.
I'm with you.
Supervisor Green.
If I could try to get consensus, it doesn't have to be a whole lot, but governance is a thing, and I think there is room for improvement on the main website and then their sub-website and stuff like that. You know, we are routing TID dollars. It is a private agency, but we haven't really clarified, is it their intellectual property? Are we kind of sharing that intellectual property? You know, do all the bells and whistles of the website work correctly, including compliance with state and federal laws applying to such websites? So it's housekeeping in a sense. It's not going to be as interesting as the equity discussion, but I do think there is room for improvement in tidying up who's on first for intellectual property and compliance on the website. There's already some stuff in this contract about transparency, so I just think a little bit of additional work on that would polish that up nicely and would not take a lot of
If I may respond to that, I think that's within the contract already because the website is part of the services that you're providing. And so I think those are maybe more, because I know I've been to the website and it's nice the way that it advertises our county, whether it's events or whether it's hotels or restaurants, I just, I appreciate that. But I think it's in there.
Yeah.
Provide the services, activities, and program to promote tourism. Maybe it's not explicit, maybe we can add such as the website. I don't know, but.
Our website is ADA compliant. We, you know, we do, that's really on the development end of things. We spend a lot of time and a lot of money to just keep the website in the current way. And you seem to be referring to maybe some backlinks, and we can backlink to, the whole idea of Discover Your Lake, you guys got started because we created a district and there was no URL, and the county wouldn't give us lakecounty.com for months and months. So we had to establish someplace for people to go see our meeting notes and minutes. We had to establish an email. We had to, we had to do this stuff in December of 18, otherwise, we were not within the letter of the law of our new district that was formed. So I just, you know, eaty-meeny-miny mode and found something that had the word "lake" in it that wasn't taken, which was Discover Your Lake. And so we could backlink to it, but that's just really our, all DMOs have industry or trade sites. That's where they put their meeting notes, their minutes, their bylaws, their, all of that stuff. It's not on their visitor website. It's not hard at the base of our website to put a link to that website, but you don't really want that stuff in there.
And this contract isn't meant to micromanage the work.
Got you.
This is our agreement between the TID and the county. Okay, so it looks like we got some.
And just very quickly, I appreciate you're ADA compliant. You're not COPA compliant, so still work to do. Could be covered on the current contract, but same thing, I want to challenge it. I want to, I want to see that work done, so.
So at this moment, there is consensus for them to meet, hopefully sooner than later, but on their time, on their schedule. but on their time, on their schedule, bring it back to us with the amendments discussed for equity around the lake and diversity of imagery. And move forward and approve today to ensure that the work continues and is not postponed. And that's what I'm thinking will happen if I throw a motion out. Okay, just wanted to check in before I did a motion.
Throw the motion out.
All right, so I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Visit Lake County, California for provision of administrative services to Lake County Tourism Improvement District in the amount of $112,500 from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And we will take a brief break and come back at 10:20. Okay, 6.4, our 9:45 a.m., sitting as Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, consideration of resolution approving an exemption to Lake County Sewer Code, Section 205, allowing APN 012026140 located at 9586 South State Highway 29 in Lower Lake to remain on a private septic system. And we have Special Districts Director Scott Harder.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're back again today for your consideration with a little more information. We were last before you, oh, on June 27th, and the board had requested some additional information of the, the requister, the applicant, on the potential costs or estimated cost for rehabbing the existing septic system. At that time, the requister had brought four estimates ranging from about $100,000 to $160,000 for the cost to bore underneath Highway 29 to tie into the district sewer, which is 90 feet from the parcel. The board had requested some additional information on the cost of rehabbing the existing septic system, and we're back with two quotes today. One's about $11,000 and I think one's $12,000. So with that additional information, the requister is still asking for a waiver of Section 205, oh, no, excuse me, yeah, Section 205, which requires the owner of any building within 200 feet of our sewer system to connect. And he's asking for that waiver under Section 204, which allows the board, on your own motion by resolution, to, what is the exact language, suspend or modify any of the requirements of the sewer use ordinance. So that's what we have before you.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing this item back. Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, appreciate the, the extra information. I know I was one of the ones that requested, you know, that, that full picture item as we're looking through the, you know, this project and the request has been brought by the, the current owner of the building as we move forward. And I think that, you know, I greatly appreciate it, but as I looked at the information that was given, at least to myself, as we moved through this process, I think that, you know, each one of these, I think, is a different case as it's coming forward. That's why the board has the opportunity to do this. But, you know, I just, right for them, you know, I want to make it clear that I can't support this resolution today. I think that when we're talking about the overall health of Lake County, the lake, our streams, as we're moving forward, we're talking about the full circle project and a bigger scope of these things. I just want to make that clear. I appreciated the, the full picture and understand the difficulty and the differences, but I can't support this resolution for, you know, waiving those requirements on this today. So I just want to start that off right off the bat here. There's no question from my, you know, from me, so thank you, Scott.
Yeah, no, not a problem at all. And I fully understand that. I think in thinking back, I think I can only pinpoint one case where the board has taken action, and it was in the case of a fire burned home. And so in that case, when the permits were pulled at the building department, the requirement, they were within 200 feet, there was, that requirement was triggered. However, their septic system was not damaged in the fire, and so they came and requested of the board the waiver to continue using the existing septic system, which was still working as they rebuilt. And that's, you know, that's the only instance that I'm aware of, that this has actually been waived in this fashion. So fully understand the desire to protect our resources, the lake, the creek nearby.
Thank you, Scott.
Supervisor Spatier.
Appreciate, appreciate the words from Vice Chair Simon. Definitely wanted to hear your perspective, especially since this is in your district, but also want to state some reasons why I'm concerned with this as well, rather than just making a vote. This is within 90 feet, and in fact, I was told it might even be 61 feet that needs to be dug underneath, so it might even be less. The maximum is 200, so it's not even like we're talking 198 feet, we're talking less than 50% of the distance. It's within 300 feet of a creek, everything slopes downhill. If there's an issue with the septic, but my biggest issue is whoever decided to make that a C2 is very much a spot zone in the past. We have to deal with those circumstances until somebody approaches us with a rezone or something of the kind. But the fact is, there are some by right uses that are available and we're seeing in the paperwork that was submitted to us that it has a maximum 300 gallons per day allowance for that septic tank. And if you look at some of the by right uses on there, which can be anywhere from, and some of these things are not necessarily realistic, but you can split that building up and make it into a hotel of sorts, you can probably create a restaurant, you can do a hair salon, a barber shop, a lot of those things have great additional use of water, and especially if you hit certain ones, like let's say a hair salon, which is a, from what I looked up, about 70 gallons per day per chair, no hair salon has one chair. Then you're going to exceed the 300 gallon mark pretty fast, and there is no trigger within our systems to know that somebody has changed that use because it's a by right use. I talked to environmental health, they would not be contacted about that change. And if this was a residential, I wouldn't have an issue with a septic tank, but since it's commercial, I think it needs to be done appropriately. And as soon as we start saying you don't have to connect, then who else are we going to say that you don't have to connect as well? I will say one more thing. Director Harder and I have been discussing some sewer concerns and issues with some of the housing development, and we have not found a way to go around the rules and regulations that we have both locally and statewide. And here, we're looking at a way to bypass the law for something that's not housing. We have a housing crisis. And so it would hurt me to say we can do this for this commercial access, but we can't do it for our housing. I want to find a way, and I hope that we can find a way to make this easier, but I think connecting to a real infrastructure is the best way to move forward. And so again, appreciate your perspective, Vice Chair Simon, and I'm going to follow in suit.
I think it's, you know, we always have to have the conversation and weigh the benefits with economic development and protecting our resources and, you know, I've actually been in the situation where I was trying to develop property and had to bore under a highway and decided not to do the, the development. And, you know, that's a choice that this property owner has to make. And additionally, you know, if they choose to do this, their property will increase in value. It'll likely sit vacant, so at some point, they're going to have to do that, or, you know, if the full circle project comes through there, or if there's another development over there, maybe at some point, they can tie in. But I, I don't want to set a precedent that this is what we do if you're, if it's too difficult. Our ordinance is vague and it doesn't have thresholds. But, but I do, I agree with both of you. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, agree, the ordinance, well over 25 years old, is not particularly clear on this. You know, the special circumstances and the findings, we would make a special circumstances. Not really special about this, you know, sewer connections are expensive, so these are ordinary circumstances if somebody has a failed septic and needs to punch in. That said, the replacement for the septic versus the hookup, it's like 10 times more, right? So I can get, whether it's a commercial business or a residence, either one would face a choice. I now have a failed septic, I have a piece of property, my ability to continue using it or to develop it to a higher purpose is going to be determined basically by the ability to affordably hook up to this or to suffer the consequences of having a failed septic and not be able to replace it. So I don't think the ordinance, the way it's worded currently, really, it may give us the latitude, but I don't think there's consensus that the special circumstances exist. But I'm just curious if we could use this as a teachable moment and say, if we deny this today, that'd be without prejudice, so that if we can put our heads together and get consensus that we do need some ability to look at hardship cases, whether for businesses, whether for fire affected properties, and just give a little rhyme or reason to if we do have future waiver requests or fee reduction requests, where we might do a cost of share or something like that. I'd be interested in at least exploring whether this board would be interested in fining a tool or a mechanism for future hardship requests like this. So yeah, I'm really hesitant to support this today, but I am curious because of the ask whether we can kick the tires on our moldy oldie sewer use ordinance to anticipate future requests like this and maybe find a way to accommodate some of them.
This is only the second request, correct?
It's really only the second that I'm aware of, and I've been with the district since 2004.
Okay. Supervisor Spatier.
That's not 1976, no, not since 1976. So at this moment in time, just to understand, this was brought to us because they needed approval to fix their septic tank, and because they're within 200 feet, this was told to them that they have to connect, and then they decided to ask for the waiver. My question is, if we say no, nothing will ever happen to that property until somebody digs underneath, correct?
That is my understanding, yeah. EH kicked it our direction because they had a failed, failing septic system and because it was within 200 feet. So I do not believe EH would permit a septic system out there, given the fact that the ordinance requires them to connect to the sewer system.
Just playing, I guess, devil's advocate, because I'm okay with the direction we're already going, but at the same time, having a building that might be completely unused for decades to come, if we say no and nobody wants to fork out the $100,000, what if there's a timeline? And we say within a matter of a couple of years or one year or three years that it needs to be connected, but that a place of business can be introduced there, and that is one of their functions, is to manage their profits, to ensure that it goes back into being connected to their, to the sewer. Just, just asking, rather than not seeing that property being utilized, just want to put it out there to see what the thoughts are of the board.
That would be in keeping with the ordinance language now, we'd be doing modification, kind of a time limited modification to accommodate an orderly progression from a septic to a sewer hookup. That, I think, does fall within the plain language of the statute. So that type of accommodation, if the board was interested. But it'd be kind of a weird direction, because I guess we would actually have to ask for EH to give its blessings on something it's not really allowed to, but I guess with board direction, EH could give that flexibility, but I don't know how you would enforce it. Would it be by means of an MOU or a contract or CUP? There's no CUP hanging on it right now, and I'm kind of thinking of the most likely by right C2 business that might pop up there at this point. So how would we enforce it if we gave that flexibility? And I guess I would turn to staff for that.
That was something that I was considering as well, but the enforcement part of it, I, I think that's putting, I don't know, I'll let you speak to the enforcement part of it.
I, my vision of the enforcement part is that, you know, I don't see a way to enforce it, I'm not sure, but Lloyd, you probably speak...
Can't cut them off from their septic tank.
Right, there's no way to...
I mean, the cynic in me would say that they would occupy it for the time and then one month before their requirement to put the sewer in, they would bail and go find another location, but that's, that's just the cynic in me, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, from my, from my point of view, the time is now if we're going to make this change as we move forward, I don't think, and Lloyd, we're not setting precedent here, no one else can bring a waiver. There are going to be certain instances, this is a specific instance with this property is going forward, and anything we do today with this resolution just follows along with the ordinance, but gives another property owner or somebody an opportunity to come back to this board. And I think at that time, we could have a conversation, because we don't know what that may look like. If this is denied today, maybe they move on, another property owner, and it's a different conversation on what type of building goes in there, because I think for years, it was an antique shop, you know, just sitting there in operation for it. So a different conversation, come back to the board if there's a new property owner, I think. Lloyd, if you could just, you know, help me with that, make sure we're not setting some precedent today, we're just following the ordinance and the opportunity the board has to discuss that.
Yes, it is, discretion, the discretion lies with your board under Section 204, so it is made on a case by case basis as it's presented to the board. Concerns regarding the, the language of the ordinance may require amending the ordinance itself or that the relevant sections of the Lake County Code, so certainly, stat, direction to staff could be given to look into that.
Good.
Okay, I will open up for public comment. Do we have anyone in the chambers? We have some hands up in the Zoom room. I think Ginger, you had your hand up first.
Yeah.
Can unmute, state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Ginger Kite. I'm a Lake County resident since 1982. I currently reside in Lower Lake. I think, I wrote down some words, but I'm so happy to hear you guys, the way, the direction that you're thinking and looking at this, the way that you're looking at it. I feel that the code, the, the Lake County Sewer Code, Section 205, when it was put in, took place, into effect, there was a reason. The code is still in effect, and as I am understanding, it's applicable to all businesses. And I heard the comments that you made, I think, looking at it case by case is a good idea. But I feel that making exceptions sets, making an exception on this property would set a dangerous precedent. I have invested in commercial and non-commercial properties in Lake County, also in Sonoma County, also in San Francisco. When you purchase real estate, investors usually do their due diligence. As an investor, you're aware of what the requirements are, what the code requirements are, what the laws are, and you know what you need to follow in order to use the property for the intent that you have in mind. I think that's, that's all I have to say. I thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Sufian Hamoda.
That's the applicant, property owner.
Hi, yes, Sufian, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, so, um, yes.
Can you just state your name, please? Thank you.
Sufian Hamoda.
Okay.
So I just wanted to take a quick note on a few things, because it seems like the conversation is swaying more towards the concerns of the use of the property per se, whereas we're requesting the relief due to the unique circumstance, which is very unique for the property itself. Are we saying because the business we chose is the reason that we are not allowed this exemption? Because this property was established its use and approved through design review 20207 in December. So while the property was purchased with a fully functioning septic, went through the whole design review process, each of the agencies, including environmental health, everyone had reviewed it, this unique circumstance was where it had failed. There are many other properties that fail, and we are now being asked to connect across a highway. That is a definitely very significant and unreasonable hardship for anyone, no matter what business, no matter what use, which again, is not in question here, the use was already established well before it had failed. So with that being said, every agency that we've spoken to, Special Districts, Environmental Health, they're, they're all recommending the exemption because of this hardship for it. So I'm, I'm just kind of confused at how this isn't a very unique circumstance and how we are separating it from its business versus the property itself, which again, I mean, could have any, as you listed, many types of businesses, but just to be, just to be aware, I mean, if this exemption is not allowed, the property will be unusable until someone connects to the sewer. So that, that building has already been vacant for, I believe, three years before we had even bought it. And, I mean, essentially, it's just going to sit there as it has been. So I, I am open to, and definitely open to the discussion of over time. I think that is more reasonable, that's something that we could work towards, but... is more reasonable, that's something that we could work towards, but even those estimates that we provided the first time, you can see the exclusions, no one can calculate how much that is going to cost for the traffic control, for the actual boring, I mean, as we mentioned, it is a very long distance to go underground to connect to a sewer. So I appreciate the time to go over this, I think, exclude, again, I think this is a very unique situation, and we should be focusing on the property itself and not the use, because as we mentioned, any use can come in here. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay. So I don't think that we brought up the use as one of the concerns, other than it's just retail, and, you know, when you do your due diligence, as what was mentioned with the last caller, you understand that if the septic fails, you're going to have to do this, and this, and this. And when I rebuilt my house after the valley fire, I was told that too, when I went for my permit from environmental health. If your leach line fails, which it will eventually, you're going to have to do this, this, and this. So, I mean, that is the responsibility of the commercial property owner, and as far as staff recommendations, I don't believe that we've heard that staff recommends that we move forward with this. Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, I just want to add as well, to me, this is a similar topic as when there's a rezone, don't look at what the project is, look at what all possibilities of projects in the future are. This is an opportunity to make sure that something is done right, so all future uses, including the one you're looking to activate, are going to be appropriate. And to me, a special circumstance is not a financial hardship. To me, I mean, we can go around our county and find out who has financial hardship to do some of these things, and I don't want to start seeing these popping up as special circumstances. To me, it would be there's a creek between you and the pipeline, and putting a pipeline through a creek would be a special circumstance that we should say no to. Definitely, it's costly, but it's definitely not an impossible endeavor to make happen either.
And it improves the value of the property and the uses going forward for the community as well. Do we have any other public comments in the room, or in Zoom? I'm not seeing any, so I'll bring it back to the board. Did you have somebody whisper something in?
No, I was just getting ready.
Okay.
So when the action says, would it be to deny the request? Because it says offer the resolution, so we're not offering the resolution, so no action needed to be taken? Would we move forward?
Correct. If the resolution is not offered, then there would be no action, resolution dies.
Correct. So is there action to be taken on this item? Okay, I'm hearing no action, so we will close this item and move on to our 6.5 item 10am consideration of resolution adopting the three-year Lake County Mental Health Services Act program and expenditure plan for the fiscal year 2023 to 2026, and we have behavioral health. Come on up.
Do you have the clarification that you need, Scott?
I do, yeah, and I just wanted to thank the board for their consideration.
Sorry.
Just wanted to make sure, you're still sitting there, so I wanted to make sure. All right, excellent.
He's still there.
Sorry, Scott.
That's all right.
All right, let's trade Scots here. You're walking better.
That's what I was thinking, every week.
Right. Okay, Director Jones.
Well, thank you. Oh, hello. I do. Did you see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, thank you, Board, for hearing our presentation of the three-year Mental Health Services Act Plan. We just concluded our planning process. Every year, we come to you with either an annual update or a new three-year plan, and so this is that new three-year plan cycle. The process, as you probably are aware, because you may have even come to some of the stakeholder meetings, involves significant stakeholder feedback, that's what drives Mental Health Services Act dollars, and so, I mean, and with me, I do have Scott Abbott, who is the Mental Health Services Act Program Manager for Behavioral Health, and so if there are any questions as regards the presentation that I can't answer, I'm sure Mr. Abbott will be able to. You're doing great. It's fine. No, it's, you know what? I think there are ghosts of the machine sometimes. I think, can everybody, well, importantly, I suppose, the folks on Zoom will be able to see it, are you sharing the screen?
Showing help, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Is it showing this? Hold on. Um, it's not showing.
That's all right. Okay.
No problem.
I got it all, it's fine. Okay.
It's showing that, doesn't it?
I don't know, we'll just roll with it. All right, so the agenda is today to look at, obviously, the background a little bit for folks who aren't familiar with how the Mental Health Services Act came to pass, and what the three-year plan and community process, planning process looks like. Some prevention, early intervention evaluation reporting, a lot has changed in that space, and they've made a bit more robust the reporting requirements for some elements of the MHSA, program participation in our favorite, our outcome data, community needs assessment and findings from this most recent three-year planning process, and the proposed programs and plans for this new iteration of the three-year plan. Okay. All right, so we're going to talk about, first, let me give some contextualization here, there are different buckets of funding with regards to MHSA, and so one of them is specific to training and education, and as you can imagine, that's a pretty salient issue for the behavioral health workforce now, more than ever, for better or for worse. And so for background, of course, this is Proposition 63 we're speaking of, which was passed in November of 2004, and this are, these are funds, again, that come from a 1% tax on folks, Californians specifically, whose income is over a million, and so these provided outline of the MHSA funding bucket, so you got community services and supports, that is the largest bucket of funding, and also provides the most direct services, this is how we pay for a lot of housing supports and services for our beneficiaries. Then the second largest bucket of funding is the prevention and early intervention. Prevention is a big component of the MHSA, and rightfully so. Innovation, this allows mental health plans to experiment and throw some spaghetti at the wall and see what sticks, and maybe some good comes out of it. Workforce training and education, pretty self-explanatory, and then last, we have capital facilities and technology needs, this funds infrastructure support projects such as a new electronic health record. All right, so some important things to consider here with regard to the planning process, oh, that is so small. So the biggest thing here, of course, is the stakeholders, and we work really, really hard, I'm emphasizing this heavily, because we work really, really hard to engage our community and hear from them about what they want, it's their plan and their, and their tax revenue to, to plan for. This is also in collaboration with our Mental Health Advisory Board, and so they actually host some of our, that's what they're supposed to be doing, so that's great that we have that up and going, where they're hosting that and convening those stakeholder gatherings. Of course, this represents, this presentation by the Board of Supervisors represents kind of the last phase of stakeholder feedback input at that last level before approval. So what will happen is, we'll present this, hopefully, it sounds reasonable enough, and you'll authorize the Behavioral Health Director to sign the plan and submit it to the state and say, hey, this is what we're going to do, and then we start it all over again. Oh, technological issues. I appreciate your attention to detail. Round number five, I believe. And then up there in the upper left-hand corner, or no, you can just go from current slide.
Click on the notes situated below the slide. And hide all ink on slide option. Like, if you, start the slideshow mode, click on notes situated below the slide. So you want to start the slideshow?
Yeah.
It's not showing the...
Well, what I can say is that the item does have the attachment. Would your board be okay with just continuing on, and I can talk you through this, if you have it up in front of you, if that's sufficient for the community to be involved, is my concern, but given that they have the attachment, theoretically, people could have downloaded it. Okay, so let's continue on then from slide five. All right, so on slide six, actually, we'll move on, oh no, back to slide seven, sorry. So we do, we pay somebody to help us with this, they do a really great job, it's Resource Development Associates, your board also approves the contract with the Behavioral Health Services Department for those consulting services, and I think a really important part about what RDA brings to the table is, you know, because these are such large amounts of money, it's really important to us that we are neutral, and having a third-party entity facilitate this is certainly another way to ensure neutrality, so, I got it, I think we're good. All right, now, so number six, PEI, so that's prevention, early intervention evaluation reporting, so this is just some footnotes, really, and the big takeaway from slide number six is that we're having some significant increases in reporting requirements for PEI, which is fine and good, and there's a lot more focus on data, again, which is fine and good, so what this reflects is an overall trend within the state of becoming more sophisticated with PEI programming, and so whenever you have sophistication increase, so do the reporting requirements, essentially, of the program, so I would say, overall, as a state, we're kind of looking into the future. Now here, well, and I think it's this spring that there may be a vote, if it makes the ballot SB 326, which would change Mental Health Services Act to Behavioral Health Services Act, and change some of the funding allocations, so just as a foreshadowing of perhaps some changes to come. So on to section two, which is slide seven, which is our fiscal year 2122 program participation outcomes. So we have a lot of several many programs that are under our community services and supports, or our CSS bucket, so that includes Crisis Access Continuum, and I suspect here shortly, that's going to change because of the requirement for mental health plans to implement a mobile crisis response effective January 1, so all mental health plans across California are required to implement this, and so I suspect that this may change as we, like many other counties, we're sort of building the plane as we're flying it, but because it is a short, a short runway to the go-live date. We also have our forensic mental health partnership, and that is funded, this is also going to change here in 2024 because of Cal AIM, and in 2024, under Cal AIM, inmates within 90 days of release will be eligible for what they call pre-release services in the jail, which are medical reimbursable, not only physical health, but mental health, specialty mental health, and drug services. So that will probably change significantly, and those funds will probably be reallocated, since we'll be recouping quite a lot of funding from the provision of services, billable services in the jail milieu, and I'm pleased to say that we're working in close partnership. I want to shout out to Norm Taylor, who's always a really great partner, also Chair of HOW, for Crystal Markitane, I'm probably forgetting others, but for kind of starting the process about talking about these things. So as I just moved through here, kind of foreshadowing again where the trends are, do I see a question for me?
Did you say will be or are?
Are, have been meeting about just about...
No, 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 as far as the 90-day prior to release.
Will be in 2024.
I thought it was already in action.
No, no, so Cal AIM was a slow rollout and justice-involved initiative, so first, what you have is you are required to do pre-release coordination, so that upon release, they're immediately eligible for benefits, get warm handoffs, and then the next phase of that rollout for increasing services to the justice-involved population, or incarcerated people, really, is to provide actually Medicaid reimbursable services, so that isn't happening yet. Yeah.
Is it January 1st?
Hmm, it's 2024, and I don't know if it's January 1st, it may be, it's either the first or fiscal year, that's what it's going to be.
Okay.
But we're trying to wrap our head around it, and I think we're, I think we're doing a good job, I think we're going to be just fine. All, full service partnerships, so FSP is probably our largest bucket of funding within the CSS program, and so that funds a lot of, what the, what the phrase is, is whatever it takes, pretty much, so if that's housing, if that's helping with school supplies, I mean, the list of whatever it is, is whatever it is, to help a person be stable, and we have a lot of actually great outcome data on the FSP program about reductions and recidivism for justice-involved population, that's coming up perfect, thank you so much. Older adult access, parent partner, parent partner support. So in some of our teams, we have the integration of these MHSA-funded program positions, and one of them specifically is our program for early intervention for young people who are experiencing psychosis, and so as you can imagine, that's really hard for a family, right? And so even just as important, if not more important, honestly, sometimes, is providing services and supports to the family of that youth, so that they can have that support in the home, and so the parent partner is a position that will pair up with that family and help walk them through the process of having a child with mental health or other needs, so really critical. We do a lot of work in the behavioral health space around trauma-focused or trauma-informed care, co-occurring care, which means you have a dual substance use disorder and mental health issue are really, really common, I don't think that's a surprise to anybody, so we do have specific programming around addressing that very big need in our community. Outreach and engagement, we do a lot of work going out into, like, for example, the schools, the communities, providing trainings, mental health first aid trainings. I know I just sent Chief Rasmussen over at Lakeport PD a link to potentially enroll one of their officers in a facilitator training for mental health first aid, to pair up with our staff to provide law enforcement, mental health first aid training, so that, these buckets of money fund that kind of stuff, is what I'm trying to say here. Also PEI, a wide range of different programs, and these, again, are more geared towards the prevention end of the spectrum, so these programs fund things like Motherwise, rights for postpartum, also fund, what are some other examples of PEI?
Our biggest one right now is, or one of our main ones that's new, is the outreach van that we're doing, where we're going out with a van into the community, to particularly homeless encampments and other places, where there's people identified as needing, doing, doing actual outreach to them to help them engage into services.
Yeah, and that was a nice little seed money of cannabis grant funds that grew into a whole program, how fun. Okay. So innovation, we just concluded an innovation project around our full service partnership program, and one thing we found across the state was that the entrance and exit criteria for the program weren't really well-defined, and we worked with our contractor to accomplish a multi-county work on that, so we could compare notes across counties, and got some good stuff out of that. Hi, Stephen. And, so that is our buckets of funding. Additionally, of course, we have cap facilities, so some of that money, not all of it, went to fund our EHR, new EHR, that was probably a blending of, I want to say, like, four different funding streams, but this was one of them that helped. Also helps with our buildings, you know, renovations that need to take place, things like that, and then workforce education and training, which I think is one of the hottest topics right now in the behavioral health space, and so actually, through that program and a multi-county initiative, utilizing, leveraging a lot of different funding, we're able to offer stipends, and actually, loan repayment, I was a recipient of one, actually, a small one for our department, I paid off, woo-hoo, and, and our staff were able to access that, so that education isn't so much of a barrier. Also looking at investing that in the lower levels, I hope everybody can really feel my air quotes, because it's heavy emphasis on that, but for lower levels, like case managers, to get kind of certifications and build the career path, so there's a lot of energy in that, in the, in the California behavioral health space right now, too, which is very refreshing.
Yeah, we're particularly, we're particularly interested in growing our own, you know, we found that if, if you can raise workforce within the county, those people are more likely to stay in the county because of their, the roots that they have here, and so that will prevent turnover.
Indeed, we've been very successful. Okay, so, next slide, perfect, all right, so the MHSA program participation, this is a high-level overview of consumer data, so in our CSS programs, and remember, that's one of them, the community services and supports that serves our full service partnership folks, that's 300 folks that's, that was served in fiscal year 2122. PEI, because we're doing a lot of training, education in the community, we touch 50... We touch 15, over 15,000 people in our community, providing valuable information or resources. We do a lot of work in the schools trying to avert substance use issues and things like that as well. That's in a different prevention space, but it's all kind of the same stuff. So a lot of great details there about dominant language, race, ethnicity, age groups. For your perusal, go ahead, next slide. Okay, great, so more outcome data, thank you. This is the slide to which I was alluding earlier because I love it. And so, I actually, Scott, I'd like you to talk us through this slide, will you?
Sure. Glasses work correctly here. This is outcomes for our full-service partnership. Our full-service partnership is, we mentioned, it's the largest program we have for the Mental Health Services Act. It's designed for people that are in the most need, the most vulnerable. And it's, it targets being able to help people through wraparound type of services and sometimes financial support for like housing and other things that are determined to be needed within the treatment plan. Through that, it helps people in their recovery. And what this data here recognizes is, first line right there, year one, is kind of the baseline data of where people coming into the program, where they kind of stood as far as a number of crises, being in the hospital, you know, those type of things. And then it shows through, you know, the next two years, how those markers decrease. That they're spending less time in crisis, less time in the hospital, less time, I'm not sure if this has homelessness or not, but they'd be less time homeless. And so, which is really good, this is real solid data that shows that programs do make a difference in lives.
And I think that data may also too reflect people who would have been incarcerated. I know we did keep data on that. But for sure, this is beds occupied, usually not in our community. We don't have a lot of beds in our community for folks. And so this is enabling people to stay in a lower level of care, which is independent living. And you're seeing, you know, first at 18%, that was kind of the average rate of people who first got in. And then it cut down over half in one year in the program. And then the second year, half of that. So that's, those are incredible data. So moving on to some more outcomes. So for our street outreach program, which is slide 11, this is just showing the amounts of referrals and services that we have provided as well as the areas. The majority of the street outreach has taken place in Clear Lake, which makes sense. That's where the most of our people are. Following up to that though, we do have Lucerne and Lakeport. And so people are again getting referrals to all of our services. But every time you see 100% meal, that's because that's what they're doing. They go out there with their bag lunches, with their meals, and they hand them out to people as well as a variety of other supplies that we have. There we go, okay. All right, on to 12. So this is a shout-out to our Early Intervention Services Program. And I spoke to this before, this is a program specifically for young people from about age 15 to 25, who are experiencing a first episode of psychosis or some kind of psychotic illness. And they worked with 20 children and 33 transitional ages. So just call it, what, 53 people total in that program, which is a lot, to provide them obviously mental health services, but really wrap around their family and provide those kinds of supports that they need. And there's a lot of compelling research out there that shows that really strong early intervention can actually, people, you can't cure a mental illness, it's not that type of disease, right? But you can remain asymptomatic and in remission for a very long time. And so that's what you're seeing with kids who get that really intense, heavy dose of treatment early on, as you see, almost nearly complete remission, maybe with some issues. So it's pretty sensational. And through this, we actually were awarded a couple of years ago, a grant through the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission for about $2 million. And part of that grant enabled us to expand programming, but also it linked us to technical assistance from the experts in the field, from Stanford, from UC Davis, from UCSS. So we meet every month with these literal, the forefront of the field to talk about our program and to also link with other counties that have similar programs and share data across counties to see what they're doing and what, you know, we can share, right? So that's been a really super fun experience for staff. It's a passion project of mine in our department and this is one way that the Mental Health Services Act supports that program. All right, next slide. Thank you so much. Okay, so this is moving on to the Community Needs Assessment Findings. So we talked about what we've been doing, now we're going to talk about where we're going to go. So what do we hear from our community? Go on, next slide, thank you, Johanna. What we heard from, well, first of all, we had a lot of participation. So surveys, we got about 108 surveys, 155 people at community meetings that took place on two different occasions, focus groups, 43 people. So all told, this plan represents the feedback from 360 community members. Now that does include staff of the Behavioral Health Services Department. However, it's largely viewed, and I support this view, that staff are one of our largest stakeholder groups. They're out there providing the services, they have a lot to know. So you can see that reflected here, is that a lot of staff, but also a lot of community members. And really happy to see a lot of consumers as well at Behavioral Health Services. I think their feedback is probably one of the most important groups of feedback. All right, next slide. There's a lot to digest here, but essentially this is the Needs Assessment Survey Findings. So we ask people about the services that we provide, about the access to those services, and then their experience with those services. So you can see that most people are mostly satisfied. It's about the summary from this slide. There are always areas for improvement and we're always working to improve all of these elements, the services that we provide, the quality of those and access to them, the timeliness of care, of course. And then also, how quality are those services and do they feel helpful to the families? So this is really a great feedback that we do share with our department and our clinical teams to help improve services and care. All right, next slide. Perfect. So we do have some great strengths that were found. One of them continues to be our peer support centers. Scott has said before, they're the crown jewel of our department and I think I'd like to argue that they're definitely amazing. And so we have been opening as well and partnering to provide cooling center support countywide informally as we work together as a county to develop, you know, more permanent plans, right? So we're definitely, big thanks to our peer support center staff who take on those hours to make sure that our doors stay open during that tough weather. It just, especially our stakeholders and our beneficiary of those centers, they're just, you gotta go talk to them sometimes, it'll make you cry. Don't, if you don't want to cry.
Yeah, it's also our peer support centers, which are probably the most partnered with the continuum of care, the housing continuum of care programs. And they both work with a lot of the same folks and so there's a great partnership, which I think would exist there.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Scott. So we're also noted for being friendly and supportive. Service partnership and collaboration, we're really focused on not being redundant and not duplicating services and working smarter together. Also, our services are generally timely. Compared to other similarly sized California counties, this comes out in our EQRO data, external, one of our audits. We do have pretty timely services. We work really hard to make sure transportation is available, we know that's a huge barrier. And we afford a lot of flexibility to our beneficiaries. Also, the availability of telehealth and virtual services is still something that's appreciated by the community. And truly one of the silver linings, I think, that we got out of COVID, us and everybody in healthcare, right? And stakeholders really value our peer support centers and our other community-based programs like Motherwise and senior peer counseling. There's some really nice quotes on there. All right, next slide please, Johanna. Okay, so here's some challenges, of course, you know, you always got those. So obviously staff shortages, which are linked to recruitment and retention issues. Our vacancy rate isn't the worst and it's certainly on par with the rest of the state of California in terms of behavioral health, healthcare provider vacancies. However, it's still a huge problem for us, it's one of our biggest areas of growth and need. I think in the next three years, there's a lot of energy in this space and so I'm really hoping to tap into some statewide initiatives to help us address our recruitment issues and really staff up sufficiently. Barriers to accessing and participating in services. So of course, despite the fact that we do try to provide transportation, transportation is tough. It's just tough in this county. Not everybody also has internet access, so that's difficulty in serving this county. You know, we can always improve as, I think any healthcare agency can with regard to the provision of culturally competent services. Behavioral health as a discipline is kind of on the forefront of cultural competence and justice equating and inclusion. And it's, it's an area of continual growth, so we take that feedback very much to heart. Despite the fact that we do have timely access, it is still reported that the perception is too long. So of course, we'd love eventually to have same-day access to services. That's a dream that I have and maybe someday we'll get there, like, I don't know. So I agree with the community in that and we're going to work together to figure that out. COVID-19, you know, obviously changed everything. So I think that's about the biggest needs that were identified in the stakeholder process. Johanna, next slide please. Much. The following populations were identified as those really the most in need of services and support. So here we have our unhoused populations, a lot of energy in the county right now for serving that population. Co-occurring issues, which I again stated was the mental health and substance use disorder issues as co-occurring. School-aged children and families, parents. There's a lot of work actually happening in that space in Lake County that I'll speak to at a different time. And I don't disagree that this is a huge need, so I'm really pleased to see how our county's stepping up and look forward to telling that story soon. Also, youth and particularly youth of the LGBTQ plus, the letter, you know, they struggle. There's not a lot of services and support. So I do want to give a big shout-out to the Harbor-on-Maine that we contract through for peer support center services. Redwood Community Services operates it. And they really do a great job of trying to meet that community where they're at and provide a safe space for community for those people. They actually held a really great, I believe they called it Queer Prom. And I think it happened at the Soper Race Theater. So that, yeah, so that was one of the things that happened through MHSA dollars, which is an incredible thing for our youth in our community. Also undocumented populations, older adults, non-English-speaking communities, especially the lack of bilingual services, it's always something we desire to hire. And so that's one of our areas where we're really trying to also grow within. And populations in rural areas, we're not alone in that, but there are just, rural areas make access to services more challenging. So those are the biggest populations in Lake County that was identified by our stakeholders. All right, next slide please. All right, so they also came with some strategies and these were sourced from our focus groups and also from a review of what we've done before and where we can go. So improved staffing, such as behavioral health system navigators and community health workers. So we are recognizing that we're not alone in this, we have a lot of community partners who have these staff as well. And so I think we're really focused on expanding our community network of providers as a way to try and meet some of these workforce issues. Continuing to address barriers in transportation, I know that our team was recently alerted to some benefits we weren't previously aware of through Partnership Health Plan around transportation. And so we're continuing to do environmental scans of resources and make sure that we have all of those so we can connect our beneficiaries to everything they're entitled to. More telehealth supports. And different clinic locations, home visiting options, things like that, so duly noted. Service coordination, I don't think we're ever going to get to a perfect place of breaking down silos, so it requires continuous persistent effort to make sure that we're coordinating appropriately. Also improving our, and we're working really hard on this, to improve our kind of electronic tracking of data. And so that's happening in a variety of ways. Avoiding silos, aligning with Community Health Improvement Plan. Also workforce education and training, we spoke to all of this already. Workforce incentives are kind of motto of grow your own. And continuing to provide cultural competency trainings. Next slide please, Johanna. Did it do it? Yep, that's it. The slides are blending together. All right, so these were some of the strategies that were brought up as potential solutions. I think I want to highlight the need for new services or the expansion of existing services. And here you can see a number of initiatives that are being developed to meet that need. Like I've spoken about mobile crisis response. We've also done work around our FSP program and looking at the admission and discharge criteria, expansion of co-occurring disorder services and the growth of services for postpartum and perinatal populations. And so other system needs definitely see a need to expand our SUD services, substance use disorder treatment services. And we completely agree. The department, as an aside, has recently met with the Department of Healthcare Services to express our, say, hey, we're going back to implement the organized delivery system. Not in the regional model, we talked about this before, so we definitely have an expansion on the horizon. Our go-live date at this point is, could not be any earlier than July 1 per DHCS. So we're really looking at having a very robust implementation plan that we'll look forward to bringing back to your board for review, probably in about six months at the most. So that's on the horizon. Enhanced social and community events, I do want to highlight our participation at this year's Lakeport Concert Friday Concert Series. I don't know that we've ever had that much of a presence before, but we've held a booth and we bought a banner at that. So it's been nice to be out in the community, I actually staffed one of the booths one evening myself. So we definitely hear that. And I definitely do see just personally myself that there is still a lack of visibility about the services and supports that are available. And so that's, that's our job. The onus is on us to spread the word and that's something that over the next couple of years I want to get a lot better about so our community knows what they're entitled to. Next slide please, Johanna. All right, section four, which I believe is the last section, is that correct? Yes, so what are we proposing for this new three-year plan? So it didn't come from scratch, we're just doing some modifications on some things that are working and that's kind of our motto, if it's not totally broke, don't fix it. But there are some new things. So we are modifying our Crisis Access Continuum. Pretty obvious because we do have my mobile crisis response going live January 1, so we're trying to have some alignment and programs and funding to support that. Our Forensic Mental Health Partnership will continue on, as well as our Full Service Partnership. We are adding a Native American Peer Counseling Program. And Scott, I wonder if you'd say a couple words just briefly about that?
Sure, one of the, you know, through the community planning process and community feedback that we received is there is a strong need to help our Native American community, especially for them to do kind of peer counseling themselves. It was strongly requested for that. And so we added that within the plan that will be associated also with our circle of Native Minds.
Okay. We're also modifying our Trauma Focus Co-Occurring Program, our Outreach and Engagement, it's expanding. Do we have another van in the budget? Yes, so we are doubling down, we're getting another van. And so that will be two mobile, yeah, two mobile outreach vans out there going to serve. All right, so on our PEI, the one thing that we modified was our Outreach and Engagement and that ties into, I think, the van as well because they're kind of interconnected there. And also the...
Also the Crisis Access, the Mobile Crisis. The Outreach and Mobile Crisis will be working together to be able to serve our county. The goal being to be able to do it 24/7 a day.
Actually, the requirement is to do it 24/7, so we're going to see, we're going to try, okay. We are, we talked about cap facilities, no changes there. And no changes to our workforce education and training plan either proposed. All right, next slide, Johanna. So much, so this is just a summary of the changes that we've already described. Next slide please. Much, and so this is the money. This is the money associated with every year of the next three years. And the money is represented to projections done by preeminent consultants in this space around what the MHSA revenue, so it's looking at tax revenue and how much we expect to receive from those 1% of earners. And that's what these projections are based off. Obviously, they can and have changed. MHSA has done really well over the past couple of years despite the pandemic. It did not appear to impact our MHSA revenue. In fact, we saw pretty good returns during that time, which was very interesting and good. But yet we tend to be pretty conservative and definitely keep as much as we can in reserve to anticipate the lean times, which inevitably arise.
As you, as you know, I mean, California taxes are very volatile, you know, depending on... As you know, I mean, California taxes are very volatile, you know, depending on the economy. And the projection is also a lot of volatility. And so our budget is kind of designed to go, you know, straight across the middle of that, recognizing there's going to be ups and downs. And so it's, we try and keep it fairly steady, recognizing that. The nice thing about MHSA is they give you five years to spend a particular year. And so that, because of that, that allows for that stability.
Much. All right, next slide. All right. Well, that's our presentation. I hope that it was enjoyable. And any questions?
Thank you so much for that. I know a lot of work goes into these plans, and it's kind of like the Golden Gate Bridge where you get this approved and then you start working again. And so I just really want to appreciate everything that you put into this. Do we have questions from the board? Supervisor Spatia.
Please start with Supervisor Green.
His pen's not up.
Oh, I always start.
I can go. It's a real quick question.
Please.
Just, and this kind of goes back to a recent COC meeting. So on Slide 9, I think there was a metric about the ability to connect with our Native American populations. But in that recent COC meeting, what really struck me was just a really disproportionate amount of unhoused Native Americans. So I know it's not a direct correlation between unhoused individuals and those suffering or at risk of suffering mental illness, but that number still kind of haunts me from COC. So I'm really appreciative of this new peer counseling program. I'm definitely appreciative of the new van outreach. But I'm just wondering, are there challenges, existing challenges right now that are really hampering our ability? Like, where does the county efforts end? When does tribal health pick up? So I'm just kind of wondering about the true interchange and our real ability to meaningfully engage with our tribal communities. This is great as far as it goes, but I was kind of watching the COC, and maybe that kind of highlighted to me, we do have challenges in connecting the dots on those services. Can you speak to that briefly?
Yeah, we don't have enough time today to unpack that. It's a lot. What I'll say is there's a lot of water under the bridge across America. We're part of that. We're a microcosm of society, right? So those kinds of challenges, we see and we interact with. And so I think there's a lot of grace and humility that, from our staff, about trying to be genuine and engaged. But these directly, the proposed programs come directly from the stakeholders, which is the greatest part. That's how you have the most buy-in. And so we're continually looking at ways to expand our service to that population. And it is truly a tragedy that they're proportionate to the share of population for Indigenous folks, that they experience homelessness much more than is proportionate. And that's true everywhere, unfortunately.
Supervisor Spatia.
So I have a lot of comments and questions. To me, this needed to be reviewed in parallel with the EQRO, the last report that we had. And some of the things that were in there, I'm still not seeing in these numbers. And I get it that it's a, to me more importantly, an issue of technology or an issue of software. And I mean no offense, but I'm just going to be blunt. I have no idea if we're doing good. We're reaching out, we're touching people in a good way, but I have no idea if we're changing lives. Because this came from the EQRO, the MHP, which is us, neither measures clinical and/or functional outcomes of beneficiaries served. So I don't know if they've left our care in a better place or if they just left our care and we stopped seeing them. I've been asking for outcomes since I began, and I understand the difficulties of providing that. But all I have in the prior years and this upcoming year is how many people we served, how much money we spent, and how much money per person we spent. There's not much to tell me if the money was well-spent or if the money was not well-spent. I can't value each program. And I feel the need to place a value on individual programs, say, yes, I want to fund this program. It's doing so much to help change. So I hate the INN at 5% because I feel the INN needs to be at least 30% or 40% because that's where innovation and software and technology will come into play to provide us the information we need to really understand what's working and what's not working. I was just speaking to my colleague Supervisor Crandall this morning. It's like going to school and saying, we had 500 kids in English and 500 kids in math and 500 kids in history. We're doing good. Well, no. Are they going above and beyond proficiency? Are they proficient or are they below proficiency? I need to know how, what's our grade on these programs? And I can't place a grade based on the information we have. I want to support you in getting there. I don't know what that is, if that's just upgrading our software. I know we're working right now on EHR, which is our electronic health records. But we can upgrade. Are we going to get any information that comes out of that upgrade? Does it have a simple report that can provide that information? And then I'll read another part from the EQRO, which I think is an important part. It was one of the, in the summary, potential roots of some of the issues we're facing is insufficient tracking, exchanging related data to make person-centered, data-informed decisions. And that's what I feel like I'm here to do. What we're here to do is the data should lead us on which programs should we support and which programs should we ask for change? Or just say, the program's not working, let's move on to the next. But just knowing how many people are served and how much we spend doesn't tell me how much we're actually making change in our community. And we're looking out in our community. We're driving around and walking around in our community. There's many factors. It's not just the existence of behavioral health, but I'm struggling to see us making headway. And it's difficult. So I really want to figure out, how do we get meaningful data to be able to say, this program is the best thing that we can put money behind because this is what's changing lives? And I know that there's been work on it, but it's not there, and we need to get there. Let me keep going down my list. You stated something about getting to people sooner to get their service. And one of the things that was from the EQRO was 82% of non-urgent requests for service resulted in an offered appointment in 10 days. Only 1.05% resulted in a delivered service during that timeframe. That is not a crack. That is a giant chasm of pitfalls for people to not get access to the services. Now granted, they could refuse the service and not show up. And I know that you said we're working on that. I feel the need to ask to come back on a quarterly basis. How are we ensuring that when we're asking 82% of the people in non-urgent requests that they are being seen rather than 81% of those that are requesting it are not being seen? That, to me, changes the outcome a whole lot. If we're not seeing them, it's a difficulty. So I would like to not have an annual report or a every-three-year report. I think this is too important not to have a more often report to the board to show the progress we're making and what efforts are being made to reach the progress we should be making. The EQRO report, I think, was brought to us, I want to say, a year and a half ago. And so I'm struggling with that. The ODS, I'll just be honest, very disappointed that it's July 1, 2024. I understand there was some difficulties, but that helps expand some of the level of access. And I know that, again, there's some outside forces, but that's a frustrating thing for me. In your 2324, obviously speaks about it in the past as well, talks about school-based mental health services and crisis team. I'd like to get greater detail. I won't put out names, but I know in speaking with an administrative educator, they won't call you guys because they'll get the input of, call the sheriff. Well, no, it's not a criminal activity. Somebody needs help. They're having a crisis. I've had that happen from one of our homeless shelters in the city of Clear Lake, where they called the crisis team, and the crisis team said, call PD. That's not what... So I want to check in on some of these things more often than not, rather than allowing it to continue to better understand it, to better support it, to better get it to where we need it to be. And whether that's staffing or not, how do we continue to support each other to get there? Because these are the people in our community that are falling through the cracks. I'll bring up two last things. One is jail. I know that we did do a new contract with Jail Medical, but I also feel there's not this full blend of your patients, your clients, whatever is the right term to use, that end up inmates in our jail system. The fact that it might be WellPath that sees them instead of maybe their usual folks from behavioral health, I just want to make sure there's an overlap, and I don't understand what that overlap is. I know we've constantly been working on it, but again, those are numbers that I think I would like to address to make sure that there's no cracks. And then the last thing I'll bring up is something that was brought up in Hope Rising. It's something that I've discussed with Supervisor Crandall and our CAO, Cao Parker. And it's kind of alluded to a little bit here in the sense of better outreach to different populations. And I know that you do an internal sensitivity training within your department for your staff, but let's be real, the majority of the services we provide is through contracts. Maybe not the majority, but we have a huge array of contracts. How do we ensure that all those contractors have that same level of sensitivity training so that they can be just as welcoming, just as understanding of different cultures and different people's walk of life? I want to make sure that they're getting the same level of training and even looking at enhancing our training rather than whatever training it is that they did to be able to check that box. So I just want to, I think that we need to have more conversations. And I've said it before as well, this is not just you. You're, the people you care for are part of public health issues. The people you care for are part of social services issue. The people you care for go through our justice system. I'm not looking at you individually as the answers, but the problems that you're dealing with is so much more holistic than just what you can handle. And I know I'm trying to wrap my brain around, how is it that I can bring everybody together without violating any of our, how many hours I'm taking up before it goes to the board? Because all I can bring to the board is a blank slate of, let's do better. But I need the conversation to continue more often because we can do better, we should do better, and we need to better know how we can support you to get there. So those are my comments, and I guess I don't have any questions other than if you can describe what you're doing to better offer outcome data for us and how to ensure that we fix that gap where only 1% of the 82% were seen within 10 days. And I know you kind of discussed that a little bit too, so I'll stop talking.
Appreciate all the feedback and certainly the passion and energy for the work. Now with regard to outcome data, of course, we did present a piece of outcome data on a very expensive program, Full Service Partnership. So I thought that that was fairly compelling. Now, across the state of California, especially with the rollout of the semi-statewide electronic health record through CaliMHSA, that's one of the cornerstones, I guess, of the project, you could say, is to provide very transparent, real-time, accessible reporting around outcome data. Now individually, on a program-by-program basis, like for example, our early psychosis intervention program, we have quarterly reporting that we complete with the grantor that does involve outcome data. Now, some of that is quantitative, and a lot is quantitative. And so I would also like to just give pause for the idea that there is value in qualitative data and report. So there's that definitely awareness, again, not just with our mental health plan, but within the broader space in California behavioral health. So I anticipate significant movement, especially with the advent and implementation of interoperability, which is where a patient can go in and access their own chart, right? Pull their own documentation in real time. And also a health information exchange, which allows us to exchange in real time data with like our hospital providers and other healthcare providers to better coordinate care. You spoke to a lot, Supervisor, and I definitely appreciated it, and it resonated with me. I do think that it's larger, obviously, than just this meeting. There's a lot happening, and so be happy to follow any direction of the board as regards further reporting.
Supervisor Crandall?
You probably covered this. Just a lot of information, but I wanted to go back to the budget request where it says MHSA expenditure. Is that what they're recommending from the Services Act or is that what you're recommending?
No, that's our, we make that based on projections that are provided to us, so we've done our own work around that.
And then the total expenditures is what you followed and... Right. Yeah, the total expenditure also includes Medi-Cal because a lot of these, a lot of MHSA can be leveraged for Medi-Cal. And so there's the MHSA column, which is just what we receive from MHSA, and the other, the full expenditure includes Medi-Cal as well. Okay. And yeah, because I'm noticing like some of the differences, like in the INN program, it went, it goes from 37.5 to 410, you know, things like that. So I'm just like, I think you probably explained... And that's reason because one of our innovation programs is decreasing, and another one will start up, and that's why it booms up again. Okay. All right. Yeah, I just, I see the CSS programs are, you know, are heavily funded, and I know that we need to maintain. I just think the PEI could heighten a little bit just to kind of catch people ahead of the road.
Hold on.
Okay.
It's funny you say that because actually in the proposed SB 326, that's one of the items that they want to cut.
Really?
Just saying. Anyways.
Wow. I mean, I'd rather catch them ahead of, yeah. All right, thanks.
Okay.
Just to talk about the mobile vans, getting out there, seeing the communities. I did see, I don't know if it was just, but Middletown, I didn't see Cobb on there either. Do the guys got a site up on Cobb?
Thank you so much for that question. So no, we don't have one in Cobb. At our Middletown, we did stand up the site there, and it just, nobody came. And so it became not very cost-effective. They did a lot of PR, too. They went out and kind of pounded the pavement to try to get people aware. And so because of that, we're looking at, when the lease does term, is to get out of that facility and look at another place, another way. So we've put those staff and staffed them up at like our Big Oak Center, which has, they need help, and so we kind of, that's what's happening there.
Well, we're talking about two different things, right? The van, the van goes and meets people where they are.
Correct.
So we have the Friday night market that is very well-attended.
Yep.
On Friday nights there, you know, obviously also looking at the mobile vans. We're looking to get to the most vulnerable community.
Oh, you mean the van going? Yeah, of course, of course, of course.
That's what I'm talking about, the van.
Of cour-, I'm so sorry for that. Yeah, because we did have a center in Middletown. No, the van, especially with the additional van, for sure, for sure. We'll go wherever we're called. And so, Scott, let's make a specific effort to reach out to, maybe there's, you know, shopping centers. Are there Hardesters in Cobb? Anyways, there's places.
Yeah, and I had had those conversations before with the previous director about getting them in some targeted areas.
Great.
And when there's a lot of folks there, I think the Friday night markets, I think Grocery Outlet, too, is doing Sundays now. They still have their market there, too, quite well-attended. I think also, too, you've mentioned, I think even last year when we were looking at our, we have the Gleaners, we have the Redwood Food Bank, we have a lot of food distribution going on around the county, making sure that we have a presence there because it may be in line getting the food, but we know most of those homes are being affected. So just making sure we're kind of, you know, making the way around the county because they may not make it up to the Clear Lake giveaway, but they're in South County. So just making sure that they're there, it's visible with the vans and other things like that. So just, sometimes it just takes point of seeing it before we get those new folks that are interested in having that conversation.
That's definitely our goal, is to do that. We also attend a lot of the events that are around and have input booths and tables up to, with referrals and flyers and things to get people's attention. Elise mentioned the concerts in the park that we are attending this year. Then, like I said, the newer thing that we have is the van, which gives us even more capacity to go to different places as opposed to just, you know, some event. But, you know, it is definitely our intention, which is why we're getting another van, to increase this, this ability to do this.
Okay, I will open it up for the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers? Come on up.
She's offering money. Joan Moss, as usual, I have two questions. Joan Moss, as usual, I have two questions. I want to know how many suicides occurred in Lake County and if the number has gotten down and how many suicides in the jail. And I want to know if you know what diversion involves. I heard in a court where a gentleman, he'd gone to trial in front of the state attorney general and he was back and he was being considered for diversion through mental health. And I want to know if you know or where I can find what a program called diversion, is that through mental health or behavioral health or through the Justice Department? Thank you. I want to know about the suicides and I want to know about diversion.
Sure. So maybe this is something that you can talk offline about since it's not directly related to the plan that we're about to adopt. Got someone else?
I would say the plan has not a lot to do, but is absolutely connected with the potential of suicide rates.
Right.
Because even EQRO mentions some of the down pitfalls and our numbers for suicide rates.
Go ahead.
Good morning Supervisor.
Good morning.
Patrick Wright, it's Fire Chief Lakeport Fire Protection District. I want to speak to the issue at hand that law enforcement was mentioned and getting them some assistance. When folks are in crisis, 911 is called. Law enforcement may or may not be dispatched. EMS may or may not be dispatched, but quite often we are dispatched and we're asked to handle these patients who are in crisis. And we have not seen the ability here in Lake County of being able to reach out and get some help immediately. Our only answer is attempt to get them to load up and transport to the ER where they AMA and they're back on the street. And they really may or may not want the care or they don't feel that the care is efficient and ER doesn't know how to handle these folks. So there is a definite hole in the system. We have two individuals in town in Lakeport that are in crisis every day and they're still on the street and they're still in crisis. And law enforcement can't do anything about it. Fire can't do, Fire and EMS can't do anything about it. And these folks are terrorizing our residents and terrorizing our businesses and causing a whole lot of problem up and down Main Street. And there's not one thing any of us can do. And I'm looking to carve out, if you will, when we're talking budget numbers on these issues, to get some assistance to your first responders, to get us better trained, to get, you know, Lakeport PD has been able to get a behavioral health person with them that unfortunately, when we've had calls, the majority of the time that person's not available. They've timed out, they're not on that day, whatever the particular issue is. But my folks, we received some basic training in our paramedic school in our EMS and then it's up to us to get the rest of it. And I've asked and reached out in other counties and I'm a short timer here, I've only been here 10 months, but I see a huge issue and a huge need that we've got to get our first responders better trained and we have to have a better network and a better line of communications to get these folks the care that they, they need and the family support that they need. And we just don't have it. It's not there 24 hours a day. It's not even there. If we have, if we have a crisis right now, if there's a 911 call, that person's going to be transported to two, one of two places if they're transported at all. They're going to jail or they're going to the hospital. And we know they're not getting the care. So help us, help you to help them is my request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief, did you have a response?
Would love to connect with you offline. We can have discussions. There's a lot of work happening in the space, so I'd love to help inform you.
I would appreciate it because if it's, I'm not saying it's not being done, but it's not being communicated to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael Wegner, thank you everybody for everything that's been done to get us to this point. I just wanted to follow up with the chief's, I think, point about the things that do go on and the things that get put onto the fire district's desk or in their office. And they're constantly trying to take care of a lot of different issues. And it's really consistent that they just don't have enough manpower, which usually turns out to be not enough money, you know? I think that this is something that's really consistent and not anybody's fault, but I think looking at ways to help support him or just fire districts in general, I think have to come to the front of the line. You know, these are really important issues, behavioral health and physical safety is of the utmost importance if we look at any aspect of life in Lake County. So I would stress the money aspect for the departments that are being utilized in all their capacity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have a hand in the Zoom room, Carrie Manning, if you want to unmute. You can state your name and have three minutes.
Good morning, Carrie Manning. And I work for Lake County Behavioral Health Services. And I just want to assure the board that the outreach efforts are increasing. And as we have, I just assigned staff to go to Middletown with the van and bags of food from some of our, you know, food distribution that we do three times a month at the two centers at Lavos and the Oaks. And that's going to be starting here very shortly. You know, one of our challenges is, you know, providing continued services at the centers while we're also doing the outreach. And so I know that we are planning on hiring a couple more people specifically for outreach, but someone will be going to Cobb and Middletown and driving through Hidden Valley. And we already go to Lower Lake, Kelseyville, Lakeport, Upper Lake, Nice, Lucerne and Clear Lake. So, you know, Middletown has just been hard to get to, but we are making that a priority now. So, and on the outreach van, we also take, you know, like I said, the bags of food. So I just wanted to assure you that we are addressing that. And thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Carrie. Okay, it looks like we're finished with public comments. So we'll bring it back to the board. Ready for action? Supervisor Spatier?
Just wanted to ask if there's consensus for this type of conversation, an update on the progress made on the MHSA plan over the course of three years can happen more often, maybe every quarter, maybe every six months. Just everything's connected. We have a sheriff who is constantly trying to figure out how to get more correctional officers and a lot of the people we send to our facility there have mental health issues. So how do we ensure that we can take care of that upfront so that maybe we can decrease the number of mental health issues that are being dealt with in our facility? We're always talking about being short staffed and we're talking public defenders and trying to figure out how to deal with that. A lot of the times our public defenders are dealing with people who have mental health issues. I just think there's a lot of interconnectedness here that we need to make sure that it comes, we talk during contracts, but we don't talk MHSA plan as often as I think that we should. So just looking to see if there's a consensus from the board to bring it back more often.
I agree that we should talk about it more, but it's still pretty broad. And I think quarterly is probably a little too often, but I'm okay with having the discussion and looking at ways that we can see more of what's actually happening in reporting. It sounds like that's what you're looking at, but I don't want to have it too broad where we can spend a whole day and get really off track. So I just want a little bit more specific and maybe twice a year at the max.
I'm okay. If it's agreeable to the board, looking at every six months and have staff come back on what kind of reporting they would like to offer.
Or maybe share some programs that are working. What do we let staff answer?
May I? So we are planning to come back and it's my apologies, we normally would have came to the board a couple of months ago with our EQRO, our most recent one, we did have one. And so if it's agreeable to the board, perhaps that could be a suitable mid-year checkpoint, midway checkpoint to bring back that report and of course contextualize it within the intersection of MHSA and other stuff. I also want to, I'll take this as a shameless PSA. Chief Rasmussen has been organizing, Lakeport PD has been organizing a community meeting on homelessness. I know he posted it on face, social media. And so there's a lot of energy and discussions to be had about that. So I encourage anybody to attend that community meeting that will be held in Lakeport to talk about a lot of those types of things.
Okay. So consensus to bring this back?
Yeah, I think six month, I'm good with that. Mid-year, obviously. Sorry. I agree with that.
Okay.
I'm good with what Director Jones mentioned as well.
Ah, sorry. Regarding the EQRO as a segue, so yeah, six months is great.
Okay. And Supervisor Green, you have your kind of?
Yeah, thanks. There's a lot of data points. So if we're asking them to report back, we should really throw them a bone and say which data points are really most important to come back. Some of these are going to be annual reports. They need to wait for the data to come in from their various streams. So just real quickly, I want to refer people, there is a 221 page report that was prepared by the consultant, RDA. It's a good read. It contains a lot of the individual programs in a greater breakdown. I did have a question on page 149 of that breakdown. There's reference to a multi-county FSP. I think that's probably a copy and paste error on the consultant's thing, so I don't need an answer to that question. To the question raised by Chief Wright, and I've had extensive conversations with Chief Rasmussen as well, the whole reason that grant position with Lake FRC happened was part of a perceived failure that despite repeated outreach to BH, we were not able to get real time response to people in obvious mental health crisis. That said, and I appreciate that there are two positions being added for crisis response, but I want to be very clear, we need to grow capacity in that area, but it's also not going to be practical or affordable to staff up social workers on a mass basis for ride along programs with our law enforcement and fire agencies. That said, I want to reinforce what Chief Wright said earlier and the previous discussions. I appreciate the growth in this crisis response model. I don't think it's going to be enough. And so I want to, if they didn't make clear the expectations, that is kind of the expectation is we are going to grow capacity to do real time response. And it may not be good bang for the buck because they may respond and that person may want to get transported or may want to enroll in services and stuff like that. But the main point is, to the extent we're growing BH services for crisis response, that's good as far as it goes. We need to signal to our law enforcement and fire agencies apparently now that they need to grow capacity within their systems because BH won't be there every time they call. And so in addition to bringing back a report every six months, that I think we can focus on crisis response because that is one of the biggest touch points in this report and the biggest topic of discussion I hear about. Maybe could refer a standing item to Emergency Medical Care Committee, which already does deal with things like transports and stuff like that. I don't know if we have gone front and center before EMCC to have kind of a running temperature check of not just how we're running buses to the hospitals, but what they're running for. So, you know, we would be very interested in trauma at EMCC. I don't know that we've spent a lot of time talking about mental health response at Emergency Medical Care Committee. So I wonder if there'd be consensus from the board to refer kind of a standing agenda item to EMCC.
I may provide some clarification and respond. There's significant activity and energy happening. So we actually meet monthly for the past few months with Sutter Hospital as well as Lakeport PD, as well as the sheriff. We've also reached out to Chief White in Clear Lake to collaborate and sit at one table to talk about these issues. These are our community members and we need to sit as a community to talk about them. And so I'm pleased to see Chief Wright's come and I'll be happy to reach out to him and include him on that. So we're also in discussions with them in developing an updated MOU with the hospitals for a joint, for a community countywide involuntary response process, crisis response process. And we will be coming before your board here in the next, I want to say by November probably, to review the Mobile Crisis Response Implementation Plan and to pass a resolution authorizing the director to sign and submit the Mobile Crisis Response Implementation Plan. So I want to just also provide some context here that the mobile crisis response is happening in California because all California counties are struggling with that. I also want to say it's not just unique to Lake. I understand Lake has some unique challenges and we're here to meet those challenges, but there's a lot of statewide energy around fixing these issues systematically because that's what we have is systematic type issues that intersect with social determinant of health. And so to the end that we, to the extent that we can break down silos and sit at a table with each other and talk about these things, behavioral health continues to be a very willing receptive partner and we are always here to support our law enforcement partners especially.
Excellent. So we're going to look forward to that in November. Great.
Just to follow up, is that kind of an ad hoc thing going out? So again, silos, I didn't know about that. And it wasn't through EMCC. So are you guys going?
We do participate in EMCC and IFT as regards the inter-facility transfers of patients from hospitals to acute settings. And so yes, we do have, we do meet regularly and coordinate with them.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready for action?
I offer the resolution.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pisgah?
Yes.
Thanks. Supervisor Spatier?
Just a final comment. Staff picked out specific items from the very large report. We weren't here for five hours going through every single page of the MHSA plan over the next three years. I would suspect that that would be the guidance given to them is they need to pick the data to bring back to us on what progress is being made and what to talk about. We can ask questions and maybe that can alter the next presentation, but I don't, there's too much in one document for us right now to say, this is what we want you to report on. I trust that staff knows the importance of each sector of that plan and that they will bring back what needs to be brought.
We're trying to sew with the golden thread here.
Great. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you both for joining us today. It's noon. We only have a few items left. I think we should try and just get through these before lunch and we have a lot of closed session items after lunch.
Bathroom appointment.
Five minute break?
Yeah, please.
Five minute break.
That wasn't many.
Okay, we're gonna have our 6.6, 10:30 AM, long awaited item, consideration of purchase order for an agreement with Freightliner Northwest, Enovin for weight truck bid for an amount not to exceed $300,000 and authorize the agricultural commission to sign, Commissioner to sign.
Hello, Board. I'd say, I guess it's technically afternoon now, so good afternoon. Catherine VanderWaal, Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures. So today I bring to you a bid that was received from Reading Freightliner to acquire a new weight truck. In the proposal, Reading Freightliner will be supplying the truck body and then working with Enovin, which is another company who will provide the crane and build out the body to accommodate our large 1,500 pound standards. So this proposal has been thoroughly reviewed by my staff as well as staff from Central Garage to make sure that it's going to be everything that we need. Our current weight truck, as I've mentioned before, is a 1982 International, which we are currently operating under an exemption and limited to 1,000 miles per year due to, you know, harm regulations. Additionally, the age of the truck is making it hard to find, sorry, to find parts, when it does break down, as well as it lacks the modern safety features. So RFP 2320 was issued on May 4th, 2023 with a submission deadline of June 30th, 2023. I had contacted five potential qualified firms and only one proposal from Reading Freightliner was received. So in the recommended budget for fiscal year 2223, your board approved the allocation of up to $300,000 to fund this purchase with the understanding that the truck may not be received until fiscal year 2324. So during the recent 2324 budget hearings, this item was carried over. And at this time, I would like to ask your board to approve the received agreement with Reading Freightliner not to exceed 300,000 and authorize me as the agricultural commissioner to sign the purchase order. to sign the purchase order.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing nobody in Zoom, then we'll bring it back to the board for action. Vice Chair Simon?
Madam Chair, I move to approve and authorize Agricultural Commissioner to sign the purchase order for the agreement with Freightliner Northwest for purchasing the weight truck for the agricultural department for an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Opposed? Push and passes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. That's so exciting. Okay, 6.7, 11 a.m., North Coast Opportunities Presentation for their new digs program. Hey, come on, join us up here.
Joanna.
Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully I can handle this one.
Is it Doug's, or is it Shaw's? Is it just a day change or something? What?
It's an amendment of sorts. I don't know what exactly it is.
Why are you doing, it sounds like if I'm too smart?
It's our split personalities.
Share.
No, I think it's the, up.
That's one?
Yeah.
There we go. All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us. And if you could take a moment and introduce yourself.
Okay. I'm Patty Bruder and I'm the C E O of North Coast Opportunities. And we'll introduce these three in just a minute. But I just wanted to say a little bit about N C O is our community action agency for both Lake and Mendocino Counties. And we were born basically out of the War on Poverty, back when Lyndon Johnson declared a war on poverty. And it was based on communities know best what their needs are. And so community action is really focused on community needs. You know, back in the day, the counties, both Lake and Mendocino County, had the first rite of refusal about whether or not they wanted to take on this work. And they opted to develop a nonprofit, which became North Coast Opportunities. And so everything N C O does is a community action function. And we have programs like Head Start and Rural Communities Childcare, Foster Grandparents, R S V P, the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. And we have built on these programs over the years. And we look at how do we collaborate and partner with other agencies and entities? And I think the Home Hardening Program was a good example of this sort of partnership. But basically, we respond to community needs. And disaster response was an area that we had no idea that we would be getting into that business. And I know I worked very closely with MOOC back in the 2015 fires. And we have developed a lot of disaster response and preparedness. I think our Build Program is another example of responding to community need. And that was built out of, oh, we have no housing to put people in and we need training. And so that program really focused on that. But we really love our communities and we're devoted to our communities. A few of our programs are in other counties, but Lake and Mendocino County is our heart. And I think that, you know, a good example of, N C O was the Community Action Agency for Lake and Mendocino County. There was a period of about 10, 12 years that Lake County became its own Community Action Agency when our population got big enough to have that designation in each county. For various reasons, it didn't work out. N C O came back. And when we came back, we really looked at the needs of unhoused people at that time. And we realized that there was no C O C in Lake County. And we worked very closely with Family Resource Center, D S S, and other partners for those beginning steps of a C O C. And we found that there was not that money coming into the county because we didn't have a C O C. And you had to apply for the first E S G grant to ever be eligible for any of those funds to come. And our group did an R F P for the first E S G grant. No one applied for it. N C O applied for it over a weekend, submitted it, and that's kind of how we, our new digs program was born. So I wanted to introduce Justin Gaddy, who is our, one of our Lake County faces and is new to, to us. And we're excited about having him and he will introduce the others.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Again, for the record, Justin Gaddy. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Wellness in Lake County, working with N C O. Very proud to be here and thank you for the time. I run, oversee a number of different projects, including Build. Earlier this year, Derek Feeler was here doing a presentation. I know we're really excited about an upcoming presentation with Home Hardening, also looking to bring in our disaster preparedness and volunteer network. We do a lot of amazing things. I'm so proud to be a part of N C O and the impact that we're making in our community. And really excited to have our team here that is going to talk to you a little bit about New Diggs. And so I want to turn it over to Diana and Alicia, who are going to talk a little bit as case managers and their role and the impact they're making in our communities.
Hi, I'm Alicia Stubblefield. I am one of the Housing Case Managers for New Diggs. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Diana Maury. I'm a supervising housing case manager for New Diggs. So we'd love to be able to give you a presentation. That way we, we both talk a lot, so this keeps us a little bit more focused.
Can you just look a little closer to the microphone in there?
There we go. Is that a little bit better?
Yeah. You can bend it towards you too, if you need.
Okay. New Diggs, empowering people through Housing First. New Diggs is a rapid rehousing program that uses the Housing First model, meaning that we believe that our, a family or individual must first have stable, permanent housing before they can move forward with setting and reaching their goals. No one is rejected from the New Diggs program based on credit history, convictions, sobriety, income, or ability to pay. We are a no-barriers housing program.
Click on, click on the New Diggs one on the other side.
Oh, oh. Who we are. Programs of North Coast Opportunities, Inc. since 2016. Over 100-plus people housed. Lake County, uh, Lake County Continuum of Care, the mission to align programs and resources to facilitate solutions to end homelessness in our community. Our grants are H S P, E S G, E F S P, and H D A P. Well, you know our faces. I'm a housing case manager and so is Diana of the H S P program over at New Diggs. This is Kalia Barth. She is the Housing Case Manager Supervisor for E S G and E F S P and is currently overseeing the Housing Case Manager for H D A P. Who we serve. We serve families and individuals with homelessness, eviction notices, three-day pay or quits, or behind our rent or mortgage. H S P, also known as Housing Support Program. This, this program is for the Cal Works Housing Support Program, was established to foster housing stability for families experiencing homelessness in the Cal Works program. H S P caseload consists of 50-plus clients per fiscal and averaged 20 families permanently housed during the time as well. This does not include clients helped with eviction protection and helps, had self-stabilized without monetary support. H S P services provide six months rental assistance on sliding scale, housing navigation, 15 months case management, security deposit, utility payments, moving costs, interim housing, which is hotel stay, legal services, and credit repair. We also offer Making Homes Habitable, which helps families furnish their new homes. H S P wins. 20 families on average placed in permanent housing per fiscal with an 80% success rate of maintaining that housing after graduation. H S P works with local innkeepers and around the holidays to provide a spiritual, or spirited season, including toy drives, gift bags, and decorated local hotels with holiday lights. Challenges we face are locating affordable rentals for the clients that are low-income and working with the cliff effect that some clients experience. What is on the horizon for H S P? The goals of H S P is to build our partnership with the community and foster a community where agencies work together and collaborate to lift Lake County and its residents up and empower them.
Sure. Okay. So I'll be talking a little bit about E S G. It's our emergency solutions grant. This grant assists people to quickly regain stability in permanent housing after experiencing homelessness or while in the crisis of homelessness. Eligibility criteria, individuals or families who are literally homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. Services offered are a little bit different. H S P is more based with families and children. E S G is single, single individuals or couples that do not qualify for any Cal Works programs outside of maybe food stamps. Case management is offered, including an individual service plan, some housing and financial assistance such as moving, move-in costs, six months of reduced rental assistance and utility bill assistance, and linking clients to community resources. E S G wins. Actually, this was actually pretty recently. An E S G client was housed and also came back to give back to their community, working with C R C, which is a crisis and emergency risk communication program through, also through N C O. So that was a big win for us because it blended and braided our programs. 95% of housed clients are still maintaining stable housing and self-sustaining lives. Some of the challenges with E S G, unfortunately, it doesn't provide hotel assistance. So E S G does help with the rental assistance part of it, just not that little window right before where we can get them into some sort of temporary housing while they're looking for permanent housing. What's on the horizon? Since the Coordinated Entry System, or C E S, is in place for Lake County, we are now eligible to apply for the competitive E S G grant, which offers more resources, including motel assistance. So that's something we're looking forward to. E F S P, Emergency Food and Shelter National Board Program. This is another one of the grants that we work with and are hoping to get more funding for. FEMA, it's a FEMA-funded program authorized by the McKinney-Vinta Homeless Assistance Act of 1987. Services can include food in the form of served meals or groceries, lodging in mass shelter or hotel, rent or mortgage assistance to prevent evictions, and utility payments to prevent service cutoff. E F S P is a little bit more broad than some of our, our more controlled grants like H S P or E S G. This allows a little bit more of, I don't want to say, you know, gray area assistance, but we'll take it because it fills the gaps that our individual grants cannot. E F S P wins. E F S P funding was utilized during the harsh weather conditions this year, which included heavy rain and snow. These funds provided temporary shelter for those who had no other form of shelter during this time. E F S P funding was also utilized to provide temporary housing to those who have severe medical needs and aftercare from post-surgery. Also, another gap that we find within the service of, you know, being able to help our community is being able to help those people that don't qualify for this, might not qualify for this. We can use these funds to be able to help those individuals. Challenges, E F S P is a smaller grant, so we can't use the funding for longer-term hotel stay. So these are more emergency needs within the community. We're hoping that E F S P is, can grow a little bit more in that area. What is on the horizon? Again, applying for more E S P funding, E F S P funding, which we hope to provide more services to those who need assistance in Lake County. H D A P, our Housing and Disabilities Advocacy Program is another grant that we have through New Diggs. Eligibility criteria, those who are actively experiencing homelessness or are chronically homeless, those who are or appear to be eligible for S S I, S S D I benefits, but are not already receiving benefits. And they must be a resident of Lake County. Services offered, interim housing, that's also hotel stay. Through H D A P, the funding for temporary, temporary hotel stay is much longer due to the fact that we are an advocate through that, for them through Social Security. And a lot of the times, as we know, Social Security and its application process is very lengthy, so we provide that temporary stay through that application process. Short-term, short-term rent and utility assistance, eviction protection for H D A P eligible, that's coming soon. Again, like I said before, disability advocacy, extensive case management, external referrals for services not offered. So it's again, a partnership within our community. Wins for H D A P, this is just for the fiscal year, so these numbers do look a little small, but they are mighty. Three graduates, large amounts of benefit approvals, one couple still in permanent housing. And again, those numbers are small, but we are working with those challenges in Lake County that we are, as said before, in a housing crisis. So this is affecting those numbers a bit, but we are working towards better improving those numbers. Challenges, appeal, the appeals process for S S I and S S D I are, again, lengthy and are very time and work-intensive. But that is a part of the case management that we offer through New Diggs and N C O in general, is that we're definitely boots on the ground and willing to dig our heels and to make sure that these, our community is helped. Again, to, with New Diggs being a no-barriers program and working with the Housing First model, we do ask that clients participate in a housing search to not only have our efforts put in, but theirs as well. There is also a sense of pride in being able to find something that we can help, help a client really close the deal on. So, but housing search, search is a little bit difficult just because there's not a lot of housing. What is on the horizon? H D A P can now provide eviction prevention. Gives me a second to breathe. Okay, so as New Diggs as a whole, these are some of our numbers from July 1st, 2022 to May 15th of 2023. These are the fiscal years in which we work. H S P Housing Support Program has assisted in 50 clients served and 22, actually, that number's a little bit better. We did 22 people housed this fiscal year. E S G or the Emergency Solutions Grant, 23-plus clients served and 10 people are still housed. E F S P, 30 clients served for one-time interim housing assistance. Again, that's that smaller grant, but it did help 30 clients be able to have short-term stays where they had shelter. H D A P, 10 clients served, five clients have been approved through S S I and S S P benefits. Again, those, those clients typically, all of our programs run besides E F S P around 15 months in its total likelihood of a case, or total length of case. So in total, for New Diggs, 113 clients served during this fiscal year, including individuals, couples, and families. This number does not include clients that were served through housing problem solving, eviction protection, and individuals who self-resolved and found rentals within, within other housing subsidies. Opportunities for collaboration with other community wellness projects. And I think I want to speak not only to community wellness, but as Lake County in general and its partnerships. We are extremely excited to work with Cal A M and in new and broadening housing opportunities, as well as expand our partnerships with Build, who presented previously, bringing N C O, the client, and the landlord into comfortable and sustainable projects and housing. I think the biggest goal for, for N C O as a whole, New Diggs especially, is working with Lake County agencies in general. What we have noticed and what we want to break the barrier of are the community silos within partnerships. We are small in New Diggs, but we are mighty and we would have much more of a louder impact and a louder voice in working with agencies like Behavioral Health, which we do, R C S, and even in the school systems as well, to be able, to provide more wraparound services to, to be able to expand these numbers and help our community a little bit more. Takeaways. I think the biggest thing for New Diggs is that it's pretty simple. We care about this program. While sometimes we can only help so much, we want the client to make sure they are felt, heard, and understood. Our housing support is so much more than the monetary support, and that's where we truly make the difference. We can give a housing subsidy, but we, where a lot of our staff really make the impact is after that housing subsidy is done and that cliff effect for some clients takes over, where all of the monetary responsibility is on them and they're not sure how to handle it. That's where we come in. Money's great, but the support is something that the community needs. We provide, we meet the client where they are and not where we think they need to be. And we provide housing case management and problems- housing case management and problem-solving before attaining permanent housing and long after, assuring there is success for every individual family. A message to the general public. We want the public to know that we are very sensitive to the difference between equality and equity. We believe that everyone should have the ability to call a house a home, and we also believe that not everyone has access to that. And if we can be that bridge, then we can go home every day knowing that we have made a difference and have changed people's lives. Housing is a human right for everyone. Housing is the basis of stability and security for an individual or family, the center of our social, emotional, and sometimes economic lives. A home should be a sanctuary, a place to live in peace, security, and dignity. A lot of what we do with New Diggs is look at housing as a pie, right? Each individual piece being equal and available. But the thing that we don't see a lot of the time is the fact that there's not always the opportunity for everyone to get an equal part of that pie. And the biggest thing for New Diggs and for NCO in general is the fact that the partnerships that we build, not only internally but externally, are the forks that help eat the pie, the plates that help put the pie on. And we need to be able to build those partnerships to be able to make the impact in Lake County that is needed. So our referral process is pretty simple. With the Housing Support Program, this is directly through Department of Social Services. So any family that is experiencing homelessness and is eligible for CalWorks, they immediately have a referral sent to our office. We respond to them typically within three business days to make sure that that's an expedited process. ESG and HSTAP are direct referrals or now actually from coordinated entry. So we are wanting to make the goal of the timeliness and the response to those referrals equal to, if not more, efficient. And how to contact us? Those two above numbers, 461-4574, and our 998 number. And then we're also available through lakeinfo@ncoinc.org.
So I would just like to say that NCO is an agency that knows collaboration and partnership is the only way we're going to get things done in our community. And we are available to collaborate on lots of projects, and we can sometimes assist with bringing a project through a grant-writing process or looking at how do we all play our place and making sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes and we're complementing each other rather than competing with each other, because there's a whole lot of work that we need to be done. And I would just like to say that we, as a community, are really lucky to have the case managers that we do have. They care deeply, and they build relationships with people that really make the difference in their lives. Thank you both.
No, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work. So many of these NCO programs, we see the real benefit in the people that live in our communities. So one of the questions I had about New Diggs is, and I think maybe it was alluded to, but the support that goes, that's wrapped around these families and individuals, does that include some life skills development, like I know with the Build program? So they don't end up in this position again, and they're kind of better off as they've moved through the program?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's one of those two where we want to, like I was saying before, too, we want to meet those, each individual client where they are and not where they think they're where we think they need to be. So that goes a lot into the case management. We, a lot of the time, we require that the clients meet with us once a month, but obviously we hear from them more often than that, which is fine. That's what we're here for. And we tailor each one of our tools in the toolbox to each individual client. So if it's something that they need as far as childcare, we'll refer out to RCCC or Headstart. If it's something to where we have an issue, to where we have a client that has problems with their car, that's where FSP through Social Services comes into play. So it's tailored to each individual case and client, but we want to make sure that we provide, if there's budgeting that's needed. At the end of that six months, we sit down with, if there's a permanently housed situation, we'll sit down with the landlord, the client, and a case manager to discuss another six-month step up, or not a step up, but a six-month lease contract, to make sure that not only the landlord's ready, but the client's ready and what that's going to mean. And that's where I was talking about before, too, is that that's where the real case management begins, because now those social supports and those monetary supports are gone, so how are we going to do this? And I think it provides the clients and the community that we do work with a lot of solace in the fact that we're not going to go anywhere. We're going to maintain the consistency that we had during the monetary support, six months or eight months more after that. So it's, a lot of this comes, too, from the fact that the case managers that work in New Diggs not only have the book smarts, they have the street smarts as well. We come from personal backgrounds, most of us, where we've experienced homelessness. So we know where some of those issues are going to come up and where the nervousness is going to come up, or the "I'm going to bail on this whole thing" comes up. And we can kind of head that off at the pass and provide that comfort before that actually happens.
So I know that sustainability in all of your work is always a goal, and so I'm really happy to hear all of that. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, these programs work directly with the COC. They work with DSS. We have case management meetings together, and so we are putting resources together as well as brains and other information so we can deliver the best service to people. But the DSS group has been phenomenal.
Great to hear.
Yes. There's great stuff.
She answered my question.
Okay. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation, if only because it really highlights the complexity of navigation and shortage of housing. So a couple of quick questions, not to put you on the spot budget-wise, but having some understanding of these, I think, four funding streams I heard. So what the annual amount of those contracts at, where we're at in those contracts? And one reason to ask that is it'd be the crudest of crude numbers, but if we can analyze the number of people served versus the amount of government funding going into that, we can get some rough metrics of the bang for the buck and what Supervisor Spatia has asked about for outcomes, you know? How are we doing? Very impressive what we got, but given the challenges, we need to scale it. So any very slight budget oversight you could add to this report would be helpful in terms of the amount of grants and where we're at in that contract cycle. The other thing that really stood out was, to the extent rapid rehousing is a thing or even transitional housing, a lot of reliance on short-term hotel stays and stuff like that. And of course, we just heard a report from another group, we're trying to bring visitors here in a happy way and fill up those hotel rooms for other activities. So of the challenges you're facing, is it correct to say that there is maybe an overreliance on hotels and short-term lodging, if only because there's a distinct lack of private sector housing and in that sector, willing renters, willing landlords who actually open up their homes to a local person in need as opposed to some traveling nurse or a tourist? So anyway, any budget highlights you can offer in this very short format, and then any drill down you can add to the very specific challenges you're finding in securing housing for your clients?
Yeah, I can cover HSP's budget. So we work within fiscal years at about $758,000 per fiscal year. A lot of this is, it, of course, encompasses everything with New Diggs, between internal cost to direct services cost. So the client services cost, I mean, the troubles that we're looking in, in the fact that we, HSP provides interim stay, but with every client that we serve, $4,000 a month per family or per individual in a hotel. Now, that is high, but we look at it both, and not only we are supporting local business, but we are also providing temporary stay. We don't like to increase those numbers in interim cost. We stick to 90 days. That is also something that is DSS-approved as well, to avoid a complacency. Because that's when, if we get over 90 days in a hotel with a family, then it starts to get a little sticky in that type of situation. And that's where we kind of need to put the gas pedal on the case management. And the great thing about NCO and all of its programs is the fact that we are now starting to see where those problems that are coming up that you're talking about, the lack of housing, available landlords, just a sense of confidence within the community to help improve it as a whole and as a team. And a lot of the collaborations that we've done with Hope Center, with Build, are starting to improve that community confidence. Build can come in and offer improvements, while some of our grants can come in and offer landlord incentives. Again, too, a lot of the time, our landlords need the same type of case management and support that our clients do. And as long as NCO and New Diggs comes to the table, that we're not only supporting the client, but we're supporting the landlord as well, that's where we're making our biggest strides, and that's why our numbers are high in success rate.
And then this little guy over here? I'd just like to add to that is that there's, the two other grants that we're involved with is ESG and then also HSTAP. Right now with HSTAP, we're currently in year two of three, so we'll be looking in terms of expanding those services in the year to come. And then we're also getting ready with ESG to end this round of the non-competitive grant and then working on not only expanding with the competitive, and we're having discussions of applying for the competitive grant as well, moving forward for additional funds to continue the services that we provide.
Because ESG is really poorly funded with just the one half of the grant that we have. Now that we're competitive and we can apply for the other half, it's like $116,000 for a year, and that needs to pay for staff and housing resources for people. And it's very expensive to house people short-term in order to help them find a long-term housing. And as a community, we really need to look at what other ways can we house people? And could we have a tiny home, a village, or could we do some different things? And I think that we all need to work together to figure out how to make some of those things happen.
Supervisor Spatia.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have one question. I know that there are, at least right now that I'm aware of, 160 units that will open up soon in the city of Clear Lake. There's more to come, but those are the ones that are almost ready. Are you limited by your budget? Are you limited by the amount of houses? Or both?
I think both.
Like, right now with your current budget, would you be able to help more than 113 based on availability of new units coming online?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's important, too.
When we're looking at rental prices per month, that even though at this time they are high, they are less than $4,000 a month. And a lot of the time, too, we have the availability to negotiate with landlords depending upon their comfort for the rental prices. But if we had the availability of, I mean, we had 116 units that people could afford, I mean, we have a much stronger community just in that little piece. So while both come into a factor as to why we're experiencing such a housing problem within Lake County, the availability for affordable housing for the people that have been here since they were children, it's no longer an option for them to stay, and that's a problem.
I'll just add to that, too. I think that's a big part of what we're doing right now with our team is collaboration and working with different agencies in the county to make sure that we're using resources to work together. Case in point, the relationship we have with Hope Center. I know the staff from there. We've been able to build a great relationship and not only working with several of the same clients, but making sure that we have ongoing working relationship with landlords and hotels and making sure that we're working together to find the best situations for our clients that we serve. And that's that simple thing of collaboration with them and other agencies is so key to continue to move forward and provide the best situations for the people we serve.
Okay. Go ahead.
You know, in the spirit of the collaboration, obviously, Patty, yeah, we worked through the Valley Fire, and, you know, a lot of things have come out of that as we're doing. The home hardening program being one of those. We were asking it for a long time. Being a pilot program is very exciting for Lake County and building a program for the whole state, you know, not just one part of our community, which is happening now, but expanding that all over. So excited about those partnerships. But as you guys are going for the competitive grants, it's one thing to talk about breaking down the silos and the collaborations, but making sure that when you do those things that you get to contact one of us or NCO appointee, that we get those on the board level here for support letters, not only from us and the cities, because when they see those in those collaboration efforts, when those support letters come in from all the cities and municipalities working together on it, you know, really encourages that, especially with FEMA, who does have an eye on Lake County right now, and we could also engage with Congressman Thompson, want to make sure. And just as you said, Patty, we can't, county can't do it, cities can't do it. This is a complete collaborated effort. Make sure when you're going for these competitive ones that we have those letters as many as possible going in to support, you know, that next step in this growth. So thank you for everything NCO does, and, you know, obviously, I love the contact number there for these programs, but, you know, just trying to work together is always something we're doing. So make sure we get those support letters as these new grants will be going in.
That would be great. And we also really appreciate that Jessica has joined the NCO board, and I think that will be a really great addition and a nice conduit to the work that we're all doing. Because I think when it comes down to it, we're just all working for communities that we all want to live in and support each and every one of us. We'll keep at it.
Yes. All right, let me open it up for the public. Is there anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room with input? And I'm not seeing anyone in either space. So this was a presentation, and so no action is required, and we really appreciate you being here and joining us and introducing yourselves, and we're going to look forward to the next one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We will do 5.3, sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, authorize the APCO to extend the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, by and between the County of Mendocino and the Lake County Air Quality Management District for Air Pollution Control Officer, APCO duties through October 1, 2023. And we have our Air Quality Management District, Doug Gerhardt.
Well, thank you, and good afternoon. It's been an interesting morning already.
It's at the right.
I will say that, Doug Gerhardt, I'm the Air Pollution Control Officer. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself. And we've had a number of revisions already this morning with what's happening with this, so I will direct it to our county council for...
Yes, thank you, Officer Gerhardt. Madam Chair, we've been in communications with Officer Gerhardt regarding this item with the board. The latest update being that there is, we just received a proposed agreement or memorandum of understanding, a new one, from the other party in this agreement. And so I believe at this point, it would be more appropriate to just not take action on this item so that we can bring it back at a future point in time, perhaps next week, for the board's consideration, because it may take some time to just review the new agreement that literally just came in a few minutes ago.
I thought they were off in August.
Okay. I think we can do that. Got consensus to move this to next week?
All of that for that?
Okay. Sorry, Doug.
That happened in the last five minutes.
Oh.
Yeah, that's not moving.
Okay.
Surprise.
Thanks for joining us. Good to see you.
Thank you.
See you next week. Okay, 5.2, approve the agreement between the County of... Oh, we already did that one.
We're done with it.
We're done with the consent. Okay. And so then next, we just have calendars, and who is ready?
I'll get started.
Okay.
I have LTA APC tomorrow. Actually, and going backwards, I believe that sometime today, I believe we have a phone call with Supervisor Crandall and myself and Supervisor from Sonoma County. We have a Lake Pillsbury meeting on Wednesday. I'm acting surprised because I am surprised. Then I'll start off my day with Judge's Breakfast on Thursday. We'll be joining Hope Rising with a chip meeting on Thursday as well, and then meeting with the Technology Governance Committee. And on Friday, I'm going to be meeting with the Woodland Community College. There's a, I want to say informal coalition, kind of like the Friends Amendment of... There's a, I want to say informal coalition, kind of like the Friends of Mendocino County College. Similar type of coalition is being built around for Woodland Community College for the Lake County campus over in Clear Lake. And that's what I have on my calendar for now, other than CAO and a PEG meeting the following Monday, and back here on Tuesday.
Supervisor Crandall, are you ready?
Yeah, I'll go. Possibly the call today. Just like Supervisor Sabatier mentioned, tomorrow I have a meeting here with the CAO and you, Chair. And then, let's see, the Lake County meeting with the California Department of Water Resources leadership regarding Lake Pillsbury. Friday, CSAC, RCRCC, PG&E Vegetation Management follow-up. I have to meet with the Upper Lake Tribe Friday. Then Monday, EPA Advisory Committee, CAO meeting, and then the Central Region Town Hall, back here on Tuesday, next week.
Okay. Who's ready down here?
I can go briefly. I'll be going to Lakeport Fire tonight, just check in. Also tomorrow, Wednesday, I'll go to Lakeport Planning Commission. They've got their first go-around. They did pass an ordinance last year for parklets, for some street dining options. And so that building on Third Street on the waterfront has a permit up for review on that. Probably take a half-day off Thursday for a medical appointment. Friday, Clark Clear Lake Environmental Research Center has their partners in the park event from 5:00 to 8:00, I believe. That's at the Carnegie Library, right here in Library Park. Good chance to check in with our partners down there and see what good work they've been up to and maybe catch up on Clear Lake hitch things. Also wanted to mention, last week, the state water boards did meet. They had an information item on the Clear Lake hitch. They are expecting to drop some draft emergency regulations as soon as next month. I do anticipate they'll do some public outreach here in the county. It will be interesting to go through that process. But the main thing we've learned out in our first early outreach with surface water diversions, and now as we turn our attention to wells, there's a big data gap. And it's hard, really hard even propose preliminary water management actions or research when you just have such a massive data gap. So be very interested in seeing how that rolls out. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Starting with meetings, LTA APC tomorrow, tomorrow in Lakeport, you know, at the City Hall. And then Thursday, have the Middletown Area Town Hall, CAO Parker on Friday. You know, back here on Tuesday for the meeting. You know, just want to recognize that, you know, all fall sports are really kicking off, those types of things, obviously football's starting up too, even for the Pee Wees. And I just want to thank all the volunteers, everyone that comes out and supports all of our athletics that happen throughout the year. But, you know, the fall season schools are about to start rolling out. Wednesday, Middletown starts, obviously, back to school, so a lot of clothes shopping, a lot of those things. Don't forget that there are local options here in Lake County. If you have shoes, other stuff, you know, you have Big Five, you have some other places. You know, you're always thinking about, a lot of times, going over the mountain, but there's a lot of local stores here that provide opportunities to get your kids ready to go back to school. So just want to mention that because I forgot about one here in Lakeport. Campbell's Casuals helped us out with some shoes and other stuff, the last-minute things. So I just want to promote our local businesses too. And if you're not ordering online or going out of county, please help those small businesses that are continuing clothing us here. You know, really, that's all that I have. Obviously, I want to thank all of our fire departments, everybody that are constantly working. And the losses we had did the moment of silence. But all of our first responders are always out there trying to take care of us. And just want to make sure that, you know, I say that today, I just greatly appreciate them for all that they do. So that's it.
So tomorrow morning, can we either do a gender review tonight or earlier? It's the first day of school, so it's going to be my very last first day of school drop-off ever?
Me too, yeah.
Yeah, because they're not going to want me to do it next year.
I believe that we may have some opportunity for the end of day today.
Okay, great, great. Then I've got a constituent meeting in Kelseyville, then the meeting in CAO's office. Then I've got someone coming to meet me in the afternoon here Thursday morning. I'm going to do the Fire Safety Council, and then I'm going to drive up to Sonora for the Resiliency Hub tour, which will be Friday, and then drive home. So unfortunately, I have to miss Clark's open house, which I'm super disappointed. And also, the RCRCC SAC meeting, I'm really glad that you'll be attending, at least virtually, and Matthew will be there for us in person. And then Monday, I've got the meeting with CAO, and then back on Tuesday. Okay, so that is it for our open session items. We will take lunch and then move into closed session. Although maybe we won't, because we have 1:00.
And Madam Chair, if I may, for the closed session items, staff would like to request withdrawal of closed session item 8.3.
Okay. Okay, so we'll have 8.1, 1:00 p.m., public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, interview for Chief Public Defender, appointment of Chief Public Defender. 8.2, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, interview for Public Health Officer, appointment of Public Health Officer. 8.4, addendum, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2E1, one potential case. So that is it for our open session. Did you have something else? Okay.
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. I did allot one hour for this board to finalize the questions for the Chief Public Defender. What I would recommend is that you come back, if you're going to go to lunch, come back at 1:30. That'll allow you one half hour.
Okay. Be back here at 1:30. All right, thanks for joining us.